I'd like to call together the March 9th regular meeting of the Farver School Committee. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, just point of affirmation, March 8th?
What is this saying? Oh, my eyes are gone. Mr. Costa, thank you. It's the father from Damascus. March 8th, regular meeting of the Farver School Committee. Let's try again. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Laravee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. I'd like to also comment that Ms. Laravee is joining us via Zoom. Salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Citizens' input, we have a few people with us tonight. First up, Anne Reardon, Talbot Middle School. Are you reading it there?
No, she's here.
What's up, Colin?
What's up, Colin?
Anne's still in the car, so first up is Colin Dias.
Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, school committee members, Mr. Hart, Ms. Agia. I am deeply disappointed in the handling of the superintendent's evaluation. This evaluation was made behind closed doors and possibly on a template or rubric that was chosen not by the superintendent. This is like me taking a math exam, and I get to pick and choose what problems I get to have on the exam. It seems like every action this committee of four takes is sprinkled in with a little bit of obscurtness. What was this form that was used for the evaluation? Did they allow the superintendent to decide on the rubric for his own evaluation? It is time the school committee and the school committee to place our city first. We need to be open with the public. We need transparency. We need to stop the censorship of speech and information, and we need to vote in the interests of the people of our great city. And lastly, I think it's important that everyone know there is an election coming up this year. And residents of this city are very eager to let their voices be heard at the ballot box. And I think it is important to remember elections have consequences. Thank you.
Chairman, may I?
Mr. Costa, please.
So you typically don't address citizens' input with more of an opportunity for the committee to hear from concerned citizens regarding our school department, but I just wanted to clarify and maybe correct an error that was just read. Superintendent does not choose the evaluation tool. The tool is a Department of Elementary and Secondary Education form and tool that districts use. Through a process, the superintendent is allowed to, with this committee, develop goals for the annual evaluation. However, the tool itself, the superintendent doesn't have any decision-making authority in that tool whatsoever, so I just wanted to clarify that. You'll certainly welcome citizens' input and opinions. They're important, but so are the facts, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you, Mr. Costa. Mr. Corey?
Mr. Chairman, I feel compelled to make a statement in regard to the citizens' input. To allege that the committee of four is not acting transparently is a slur to the school committee, and I don't want the general public to think that we're working behind closed doors. As my colleague, Mr. Costa, just stated, the evaluation tool is a tool from Department of Education and not made by us. We're following the rules, and just want the general public to know that we're doing everything above water by following the rules. I yield, Mr. Chair.
Rochelle Pettenati from Talbot?
Hi, I'm actually from Dorin, but thank you, Mr. Coogan. I appreciate it.
I was promoting you. Thought you were.
Do we need to waive the rules, Mr. Chairman?
Oh. Is she from out of town?
I don't know. I'm asking the chair, do we need to waive the rules?
Do we need...you live in Farver, don't you?
No.
Motion to waive the rules?
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. Even before I start this, you know I'm an educator in Fall River, and I'd just like to thank you all for supporting us during this time. It has been a horrific year. In some ways, in other ways, it has been wonderful to learn new technology and teach the students, and also it has been wonderful to have small class sizes, so I've actually learned about my students in different ways. That being said, we have something coming up called MCAS, which we all know. It's hovering. It's the big black cloud over us, and we respectfully ask you to support having an opt-out. Well, there's always been an opt-out, but actually informing parents and guardians of our students that they have the right to opt out of this testing. Students are just coming back to school. We're just getting back in the groove, and to think that we will spend the next however many weeks prepping children to take a standardized test after missing so much curriculum is just inconscionable. I'd like to read a letter, and I'd like to ask you for your support. This is for the elementary and middle students. Dear families and guardians, the federal government is requiring that we administer MCAS this spring in spite of the extraordinarily difficult year we have had. Governor Charlie Baker has indicated that he may bring all elementary school students back in time to take the test. Please be advised that you can opt your child out of MCAS. There will be no penalty for your child or their school if they do not take the test. This is for elementary and middle. It's very simple to opt your child out. Just write an email to your school principal notifying them of your intention. Your email can be short and sweet. Here's an example. I would like to opt my child out of MCAS this year. Thank you. You have the power to choose what you think is best for your child. We encourage you to talk with them and make the decision that's right for you and them. Thank you. So this is just an example that we would like to have you support something like this on behalf of the students, and I can leave these here for you. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, Rochelle.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
It's not about that, just a point of...what is the rules on how many people can we can have in here to...I just keep seeing like people are out there, and then we gotta go get them. Can't we just have...isn't there a certain number that we...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we could, but...
We now...I don't think we're up against it to say, but...
No, I think you're probably right going forward, depending on what we get. Bring them...they can sit back here. I'm with you.
Yeah, just to make it easier.
Just easier, just so we don't get too crowded. We got two.
And I don't know exactly what it is, if it's 50 or whatever the number is.
The numbers have loosened up, yeah. We've got waived rules on this generally too.
It's already waived.
Huh? For everybody? Gotcha.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kurt. I teach high school English at Durfee. You just heard from Rochelle, obviously, and there are copies of the letter that she read from here, so we're really excited to try to get the word out about family and guardians' rights to opt their children out of MCAS, particularly in this extremely difficult year. We have a petition signed by our members. 315 of our members are supporting our ask tonight. I'm sure it would be higher. We're operating on a bit of a time crunch. This is before, of course, the state postponed the administration of MCAS just a couple of days ago. So Rochelle just read a letter that indicated that at the elementary, middle school level, there are literally no consequences to students for opting out, and I just wanted to clarify too that at the high school, it's not quite so simple. You do need to pass MCAS in order to get a diploma, and not taking the MCAS would make you ineligible for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. So if we do notify families, and we hope that we will of their right to opt their children out, we would just want to make sure that families had all of the facts. And so we have drafted letters here, and we'll leave them here for you to use as a baseline, but we anticipate that you would, of course, revise and edit as you saw fit to make sure that families have all of the information. We want them to know of their rights, and we want them to know of any potential consequences in terms of opting out. Moving forward, the MTA has a resolution to support the cancellation of MCAS that school committees around the state have already adopted, and that's something that we will be bringing forward at a future meeting, but we felt like this was a really important first step, particularly, you know, MCAS is coming up really soon, and we want to make sure that families know what their immediate options are. The federal government is requiring that states administer MCAS this year, denying waivers of states that have applied, and so in the short term, we think that this is a really great first step. You'll be hearing from two more teachers tonight, an elementary school teacher and a middle school teacher, about their experiences and their perspective on why they think it would just be catastrophic to administer this test in Fall River in the middle of this pandemic. So thank you so much for your time, and we hope that you will consider sending these letters out to every single family in the district so that they have the choice to decide what is best for them and their children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Anne Reardon from Talbot.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to talk. I appreciate it. I am here to be the voice for my students. I've been teaching in Fall River for 18 years now. I retired this year, so I felt it was really important to come and speak, so I appreciate your listening. I was very excited to see my students last week when I welcomed them back to school. For the most part, they are happy to be back. School represents critical stability for many of them. Coming back to school represents hope and return to normalcy during these trying times. Many of our students already suffer from trauma, and the pandemic has greatly impacted this. We have seen a loss of coping skills. Problem-solving and flexibility skills are harder for students to remember during these stressful times. This has impacted both students' cognitive and emotional stability. It affects memory and organizational skills, and this leads to loneliness and disengagement. We have hundreds of people who have been identified with food insecurity. There have been dozens of counseling referrals. Our students' families have suffered house fires, loss of employment, and the death of a parent. This district has always stressed social-emotional learning, and rightfully so, but how can we as a district add to the stressful environment by continuing with MCAS? I have had many students over the years who have struggled to succeed on MCAS. I have a student this year who's dealing with significant loss and struggles to get out of bed every single day. I'm very thankfully is present in school, but the added stress of standardized tests will only push him further away. Notifying families of their right to opt out of MCAS is important because it is the best way for parents to reduce the emotional stress on their anxious children. The parents have the right to do this for their children. I'm asking you to send these letters to make them aware of their right to opt their children out of the MCAS. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jen Repose. You didn't put your school down, Jen. What school are you from?
I'm from Latrano Elementary School.
Thank you.
Thank you. Imagine you have just lost your parent, and worse, during the middle of an unprecedented worldwide pandemic. Even worse, during the period when your school goes fully remote. You are only in the third grade. You sit at home navigating the remote classroom from a tragedy-stricken home, waiting for the day to come back to in-person learning. Fast forward a few weeks, and your hopes finally come true. You wait outside the third-grade door at the blue Miss Repose Cone with your younger sibling for the first time in months. You tell me how you are happy to be back in school and go from a quiet student who really participates to one who is now eagerly raising their hand at every opportunity to share their ideas. Four days after being back in person, you are taking the district Anet assessment. The entire day was dedicated to taking that test. This is the story of one of my current students, and I feel awful for subjecting them to these tests. I wish I could say that the student persevered and worked their hardest to share the ideas they have in class when taking the assessment, but that didn't happen because standardized testings are long, exhausting, and anxiety-provoking for the majority of students. To make matters worse, the reality is that many of our students will not excel on this test because we know as educators that this test is not the best measure of student learning in favors test-taking strategies over knowledge. So we spend the weeks leading up to MCAS performing practice tests and doing previous MCAS questions to reduce student anxiety and review material. We do all of this even though the test has yet to show progress in closing the opportunity gap and only continues to highlight the inequalities that persist from its existence. And now, after students have missed over a year of consistent in-person learning, the state pushes to bring students back just in time to take the test. To have the opportunity to come to school every week only to waste full days on a test that won't tell us anything we don't already know. How can we be so focused on the amount of information students have lost yet be quick to waste instructional time, in-person instructional time, on an unreliable standardized test? During any school year, it is hard enough to work and prepare and get students excited to take MCAS, a test I truly don't believe in, and this school year is much worse, knowing all of the stress and uncertainty students have faced and also knowing how resilient they have been in the face of remote lessons and home tragedy. There has never been a more perfect time than this one to let parents know of their right to opt their students out of the MCAS test. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number three, recognition awards. We have none tonight. Item number four is the superintendent's report. Dr. Malone?
Thank you, members of the committee. First and foremost, we're happy that this is our second week now with students in grades six through eight back in our full hybrid model. This coming Monday, nine through 12 returns. We are at the six-foot distance in the full hybrid model. Starting next Monday, we'll be back serving the same amount of students that we started serving in September up through the end of November. Concurrent with our work to bring students back and the testing or the vaccinations that have been rolling out and the reduction in rates, the Board of Education voted on Friday to open up all schools in the Commonwealth K through five, five days a week, by April 5th. There's going to be additional guidance sent out on this tomorrow. We will be talking with our team, talking to our colleagues and our labor unions about what this means for us, but my goal is to get back to five days a week and then to take a hard look at the distancing. So right now, we're at six-foot distancing. State guidance is three and above, or 3-2-6, but there is some misleading information. We'll be asked the state for more clarity on that because CDC still says six feet. So I think over the next month, I'll have more information to share. Looking at the horizon of where we are, as I said, I'll have all the kids back in the full hybrid as we were prior to December as of next week, and I'd like to get back to five full days in that model and then look at reduction in spacing. So if you could think about the rollout, get back five days a week, then look at rolling back the space. We've begun doing a host of surveys from the site level, talking to families about those families that will still keep their kids out. We want to know who they are. That will help us in our planning. And big picture, if this rollout continues as the data is showing with the reductions in rates, hopefully by this May and June, we can get all students back who want to be back in school at that three-foot distance, if that's possible. So that's where I am with reopening. As I said to you, I'll have more information to share once the guidance is released from the state. I will tell you that attendance today looked very good. We're in the low 90s. I'll also say, as you know, one of the issues that we've had with chronic absenteeism rates this year, one of the things we haven't talked about yet is when we have a student that's exposed and we send them home to be quarantined, those count as absences. So that's one of the reasons why we've seen such a high percentage of chronic absenteeism, but we've been addressing that through the individual work we're doing with students. So students, large majority, will still be able to pass coursework, but that chronic absenteeism rate is definitely something that we're concerned about. This coupled with, hey, we're bringing everyone back, what's the first thing the state said to do to them? Test everyone. And that went over like a lead balloon. So I think Commissioner Riley made the right decision to push testing back. I think there's going to be through to May. I think there'll be more discussion about this over the next few weeks, and based on all the work that's happening across the Commonwealth, maybe there is a way that the federal government gives Massachusetts a one-year reprieve on testing, but it's been pushed back. The testing is supposed to be non-evaluative, but we learned this Friday that the results will still be published. So even though it's non-evaluative for accountability purposes for districts in terms of punitive or supportive accountability, it will still be published, and the districts will be rank ordered, of course, by the Globe and other newspapers. So this is fraught with further discussion. I know there's an agenda item tonight that I know that Mr. Corey will be presenting to discuss, the MCAS morfolia, and if this committee would like to make a statement. Third and final thing on the report, just real quick, updates on capital projects. Tomorrow night, the City Council Finance Committee will be meeting, and Watson is on the agenda for the next phase of that project. Ken and Kevin Almedia will answer questions. They are the experts on that project and the need to be able to have full American disability, Americans with disabilities act accessibility for both adults and students in that building, and really what that means, that finish that project, that investment in our, likely our most economically disadvantaged neighborhood, really good for the city, good for the community, and of course, great for kids. So the Durfee project, the roof is being replaced as we speak. There's been a window of eight...there is a window of eight days with no rain, so that front roof that we talked about reinstalling is being reinstalled. If you drive by and look at the front, the bell tower has been...the bells have been placed in the tower. The front accessibility and safety features are being worked on, and then, of course, all the classrooms are being built out. I think one of the cool features to see now is some of the accent features that accentuate, particularly like the grand foyer into the fieldhouse. You really start to see now the colors and the lighting and how that's been designed purposely for programming. So I also found thing on this topic, capital projects, I just want to say to the committee, really, really, really great work when you guys push really hard to get the fitness, strength, and conditioning position into the budget. That new refurbished space has been used every single day by students, student athletes, and really impressed to see the excitement with the kids being have a world-class facility. So I thank the committee for that, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Question, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Corey?
So are there any penalties for chronic absenteeism?
So there is penalties when there is accountability, but this year, there's no accountability, so there'll be no penalty, meaning the status that...
I meant for this year.
No. No.
I know that in the past, it was part of our metrics...
It's part of our metrics.
...that we had to watch very, very closely.
Right. We've made huge gains in it over the last four years.
We were working really, really hard collaboratively...
Yeah.
...with the entire district to improve student attendance across the district, and now, the fact that they still count, I just want to make sure that schools aren't being penalized in any kind of, any way, shape, or form, you know?
So we're being held harmless in accountability for this current year, which is good news, but it's also bad news because think about the work that's been going at Farnsworth and Watson. We were hoping those schools would exit status, so they're not. They're held, you know, in abeyance, if you will.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Agia?
So you had mentioned about the chronic absenteeism when the kids are quarantined. What if they can still go on remote? Do they not have that opportunity, or is that...
It's complicated. So it's...there's two types of absences, virtual and physical, and for some kids, when they've been placed on...
Quarantine?
Quarantine. They haven't been accessing the...
But are they eligible, is my question?
They're definitely eligible.
You know, if they're not physically, obviously, sick.
Right, unless they're also sick, but if they're sick, they're sick. They're not present. So we've had a large population of kids sick, too. So if you've just been exposed and you're quarantined, but you go home and you're virtually present, that counts for us, but if you're actually sick or you're quarantined and you don't access, you're absent.
And the week off and week on, if you happen to be on the week off, you're...obviously you can't go on remote because...
Correct.
It's not synchronous yet. Or is that changing now?
No, you can, because we found ways to work with kids on that.
I'm just concerned that they should have access. If they can't physically do it, I get it, but, you know, we want to see...
Right. We haven't blocked access, Kevin. So I think you and I are on the same page. If you're forced to quarantine, you can do work, but it's...that's up to you now to do it.
Yeah, no, I hear you. Can you highlight again, I know you mentioned about the April 5th, bringing everybody back. I'm just trying to wrap my head around. Is it the Wednesdays that are going to go away for the five days?
Okay, great question. So the April 5th, bringing everyone back is elementary only, it's K to five. That's what the state voted on, but that's...we're still confused as to what the state voted on because they can't determine the distancing. So my interpretation of it is they want K to five back five days a week in whatever model it is that we're doing. So for us, my goal would be five days... So, for us, my goal would be five days in the current hybrid model. And we would, Wednesdays would be a normal day, just like every other day in the week.
So, my concern is that we're not actually adding kids back in from remote to, so the hybrid, the cohorts are already set up, so theoretically, if a student's on remote, just because their edict came forth to say they want people in five days doesn't mean that all children are going to have access to come into the school.
Not all children will have access because of space, but also not, they've also provided that not all children have to. If the parents choose, they can stay in full remote.
Yeah. I'm just concerned about the parents who, and I know it's, we had talked about the semester being, you know, so they made a decision at the beginning of the year to get February 1. I believe the reports on the website even say, we're going to reassess if you want to come back on February 1.
Yeah.
But I think we were in some time there of not being in school either. So, my concern is that if parents didn't get notified that February 1st is the day that you can request to come back into the cohorts, now where are we because they want to get in and there's no room?
Right, so, well, it's, space drives everything, right? So, that is the only indicator. So, we've been taking kids back from Cohort B all year if there were space at the site level. Site-level decisions, we've allowed that. We're surveying all the parents now. My goal is when I have that data, hopefully, if I, I'm hopeful to be able to get the Cohort B, the majority of them, back sometime right after April vacation. That's if we're at three feet.
Right, so if they were locked out based on space, right now, if you increase the space-
Yes.
-you could have more-
But I also have to tell you, we still have space right now, Kevin. So, when, we'll still be taking kids back, but the large majority, so, there's kids that are in Cohort B that are high-needs kids, we're taking them back first. Then the kids that aren't, they'll be prioritized second. And it may be faster than April, whatever the day that is, right after vacation, third week in April. If I can, if I can, you know, depending on what the CDC does, move to three feet, there's a good chance, I mean, we just did a markup. Ken did a markup at three feet and six feet, because six feet were already set up, and I can fit somewhere between 15 and 17 kids in, and at three feet, I think it's somewhere between 18 and 21.
22.
18 and 22. But remember, that's at three feet. I still have classrooms with 26, 27 kids in it, so even at three feet, you can't fit everybody. But we're hoping, banking on, the families that are keeping their kids home, that would allow us to serve all the other kids.
Right, so if you have a program that a kid's high-needs, he probably would get, if you only have two extra seats, they'd get the priority-
Correct.
I think that makes sense if they're-
Yeah, we're trying to get-
Obviously, the high-needs first.
We're trying to get the high-needs kids back in from Cohort B.
Yeah, and I think it was, the state was talking about the three feet, center of seat to center of seat. That is, when you refer to three feet, that is that, or are you doing a more common sense three feet between desks?
We were using the more common sense to start. That's, you know, because we use common sense, which is from desk to desk, and what they were using was the center of the desk-
Right.
-to the center of the desk, which is really less than three feet.
Right.
So, our planning was desk to desk.
So, just for the adoration of the other members, in case you didn't see that, the guidance came out to say that it's three feet from the center of the seat to the center of the seat. So, if you put the, you know, a yardstick there, I did it in the school, and I couldn't physically walk straight between the, that's how close the desks were, I had to turn to the side. So, it's not as simple as the state's telling us, just do it like this, and I'm not sure that anybody is advocating for putting children that close together, so.
Right, and the other hard part is, it's still this misleading data because the CDC is still said six feet. And the state experts have all said, no, it's, we can do it at less. So, there's this competing push of facts. So, we're trying to work through it. As I said, I'll share the guidance I get with the committee so you guys are fully informed as soon as I get it tomorrow, and we'll go from there. But looking at the timeline, I just want to really be clear about this. My first goal is five days a week. My second goal is space. So, let's get five days back for our second goal of space. If I can get five days back prior to April 5th, I will be back prior to April 5th, so that's what I got to do. I just got to-
Yeah.
-make sure I have the discussions I need to have, and we'll go from there.
But I think the five days, and you articulated this, it's still five days hybrid like we're at.
Yes.
I think some parents are under the assumption that when we say every, all elementary's back five days, it's every kid's coming back, and that's not accurate to, for the state to say or anybody, so just so if somebody's at home listening-
Right.
-it's not that simple to say. With that, I-
I also just want to say, sometimes you guys get caught up in the soundbites of what you're hearing. You got to also remember, there's a million districts that aren't open at all, and that's what the real push is. So, in terms of like where we've been through the whole gamut, we're, you know, we're on the board, you know, and in many ways, we're ahead of everyone else because of that.
I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know who, maybe Superintendent or you, Mr. Mayor. I know maybe about two meetings ago, I brought up the testing for the teachers, and, you know, we were, it was in discussion with yourself and the superintendent. Is there any update as to what is, what is going on with that particular, because I do see some teachers have been vaccinated, but-
Yep.
-I'm just curious if there's going to be any, anything to maybe expedite that.
We're trying, Mr. Hart. We had another conversation last week with Lieutenant Governor. I mean, I think they're for it, I just think they're waiting until they get more vaccines. And as you know, I would love to see educator days at both the Liberal Club and Bristol Community College, and we have had discussions about the same thing with South Coast Hospitals. So, that would happen sooner rather than later, I would love it.
Okay, no, thank you. And, Mr. Superintendent, you've mentioned like the six feet and the three feet, and does that, are we like looking at that from also pertaining to like the buses as well, or that doesn't, that doesn't?
Guidance on the buses has been removed, so right now-
Okay.
-there's no space limitations on buses.
None, none at all?
None.
Okay, so we're just looking at whether, whether we're going to go for April 5th or whatever that date is, we're going to wait to see what the CDC guidelines are, whether they go three feet or six, or stay with six?
Well, I'm staying with six because that's what we've agreed to moving forward, meaning agreed to. I've articulated that, I've held to that, I think we've built goodwill with that. The discussion that I need to have next is around the five days a week. Hopefully, I'll be bringing back information to the committee in the next few weeks that we can, that we'll be back at five days a week at a date prior to April 5th.
And you think if we, if we do go, like what you're suggesting, maybe possibly, potentially anyway, going with three feet, you think that we can do a quick turnaround with that?
Yeah, I mean, if we went to three feet, and Ken and his team, we've pressure tested what it would look like. They'd have to go out to each facility, each building, and we'd set up each room. Again, this isn't like cool, flexible seating, it's the rows and to be safe, so we'd set up each room, and that would give us the exact figure, so I'd know, you know, I got an extra seat here, what kid can we put into there, and bring that kid back in from B, and then make further decisions as we get further along in the spring. I mean, I, like I said, particularly, one of the things that I've talked at the high school, I think we can be very creative because it doesn't sound like the state has the same sense of rules, if you will, that they want to have with the elementary. So, we could do things like have all the seniors in and all the juniors in and maybe go every other, to have everyone in.
Right.
So, at least they're having time with their friends and stuff before the end of their careers. I mean, I've said publicly, I'd like to get at least the juniors and seniors all back in the May before, you know, just to be able to do stuff together.
No, I agree. This is definitely not easy, but I do think with the numbers decreasing the way they are, that it's very important to get the students back. There's no question about that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further? I do want to say something. I'm not, I, I'm confused myself. So, when they say back to school five days a week, you're saying A, B, A, B, A, or the next week it's B is the third day? How are you going to do that?
Same way we've done it since the beginning, except five days a week.
I, and you're saying the state did not mean that they wanted all the kids back five days a week?
They want all the kids back five days a week, option. Doesn't necessarily mean it'll be all kids for each week.
That was what they said?
We don't have the physical room at three feet in most places in Massachusetts to do that.
Okay. I'm going to check on that, because that's not what I was told.
And you would be right to say it's been confusing. So, that's why we've asked for additional guidance from the Commissioner today.
Yeah.
He emailed us and told us that he would have more information tomorrow-
Okay.
-for us, because we're all confused about the distancing part.
Yeah. It is confusing, and I want parents to know that we're trying to get these kids back in school five days a week safely, and one of Mr. Hart's points about the vaccination for teachers, I think would be a big step in making sure that people going in there that are comfortable. I've been, since I can't do the city schools, I've been running around to a lot of our Catholic schools, and I was in St. Stanislaus today, and they, in one classroom I was in, there was, there had to be 22, 24 kids in there, and there was no three feet or four feet or anything, and I asked them how they had been doing for COVID, and it was, you know, I went to Spirit of Santo, they had one case. I was like, okay. And I know that those kids are highly, lot less risky for having it, but they can carry it and they can pass it, but that's why we got to make sure the teachers are safe, which is what I would look at. Second of all, on that MCAS proposal, they told you they were going to publish the results town by town like they do every other year?
They give them to the media, and the Globe publishes them.
And?
The results will be released.
Okay. So, but the test is not going to count, correct? Am I wrong now?
Doesn't count towards accountability.
Okay. But if they, if they publish this, I mean, most of us sitting in this room can put the schools that are going to be at the bottom of that rank order you talked about, I mean, unless we're really off.
This is where we've chosen to work. I mean, this is the-
No, I'm not talking about it in a negative sense, I'm talking about it in a, being able to predict what's going to happen if they want to take kids that they bounced out of schools for nine, 10 months and say, by the way, take a test now, and we're going to, we're not, we're not going to hurt you, but we're going to tell everybody in Fall River that this is where your school's ranked, and I don't know if that's got anything to do with fairness.
We agree with you.
Okay.
And that's why our position is, we should put a hold on the testing for this year.
Well, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with that. Or if they want to use it to assess where the kids are, to build a test for the future, that's one thing, but I don't think you use it to put out district's rank order to publish the results. I-
I think you and I are on the same page.
Okay.
We had a, we had a conference, Zoom, with the urban superintendents on Friday. This is our monthly meeting with the Department of Ed, and one of the accountability gurus said, you know, it will not be used for evaluation, but I have to be clear, it's still going to be released to the Globe. So, they would run and rank order it like they do and say, this is a district that did great and these districts didn't do well? I think it's definitely an equity in it, and I think there's some sort of way that we could avoid that. Now, granted, again, Fall River's been open, but Springfield, Worcester, Boston just opened like a week ago, those three districts didn't have any kids in since last March. None. Lynn, so, you know, we're, we've been doing, Boston, New Bedford, and Taunton, Brockton didn't have any kids in until a week ago, two weeks ago, so it's-
It makes no sense. It makes no sense.
It really doesn't make sense.
No.
So, you're right, from a perspective of people that know exactly where we're usually at on these results, we're saying, this is a kick in the face, if you will, in terms of like, why do this to us after we've had the hottest year we've ever had?
Okay.
It doesn't make sense.
Okay, I appreciate it, but we're going to have to get together on that, and maybe we send up a letter as a group, write something with-
We're going to have a conversation about that at-
Okay.
-the agenda item a little bit.
And make some call. Anybody got any else, anything on the superintendent's report? Thank you. Dr. Malone, next up, we're lucky to be joined by Saleh Wasp. She's in the 11th grade at Durfee for the student report.
Yes, so, thank you. So, good evening. So, as a student delegate, I really wanted to speak to all of you today in support of the request of the FREA to notify the families and guardians of their right to opt out their kids from MCAS. I want to speak to all of you, not only as a student, as part of the Fall River Public School System, but also as a proud student from the state of Massachusetts and a recent member of the Diversity and Equity Committee for our district. The issue of the inequitable approach to standardized testing has been one that many educators and people in power not only overlook, but tend to disregard immediately. As a student of color who has invested my time and energy into the area of focus of diversifying the curriculum and amplifying equitable approaches to education, especially within marginalized communities, I believe that the MCAS has done the complete opposite and in fact, given a major disservice to not only communities of lower socioeconomic status, but of color as well. Being part of organizations such as Diversify Our Narrative, which have embarked me in delving into the frameworks of working with DESI on educational standards that bring awareness on social and demographic concerns, there is one thing that I have certainly noticed about the MCAS. MCAS teaches us that test scores are the most accurate measurement of our success in the future. For decades, we have forgotten that the breadth of our curriculum lies in experience and that emphasis on social impact playing a significant role in our learning. The MCAS has proven to be unfair, giving a major disadvantage to students of lower-income households, as well as households where English is not the primary language spoken. Living in the world of virtual learning has only proven this further, as the transition has made preparation for the exam increasingly difficult, especially for our younger students. We have allowed institutions and structures to shape the wrong mindset into our future generation, discouraging marginalized communities from reaching their true potential, even affecting as far back as testing for the selection of gate program students, all the way back in elementary school. Here's another example. All of us are aware of the Abigail Adams Scholarship, which is directly based on the student's success on the MCAS. Why is the score on the test the deciding factor on whether you can get money to go to college? Many, and I mean many of our students, including myself, will count on the small scholarship to help us attend college. Is it ludicrous that we base the scholarship on the test? Why not academic performance? Studies from Columbia University, which highlight the holistic idea of predicting college success, show that transcripts are a much better predictor of college success than the SAT, which would apply to transcripts and the MCAS. This is why I am ultimately in full support of the elimination of MCAS as a whole. As colleges are caring less and less about SAT scores and testing grades with the termination of the SAT essay and optional subject test, this only further proves the point of the inaccuracy of the testing format itself. The de-emphasis on testing will inspire BIPOC and low-income students. Let us cultivate and put an end to this racist and unrighteous approach in means to predict a student's academic success, which are affecting our diverse communities. This will really promote intergenerational support within educators, officials, parents, guardians, who are at the forefront of our future. Let this request from the FREA be a step into the larger spectrum of this issue of keeping the MCAS and contributing to a more diverse and equitable future for all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
Saleh, very well delivered. Great job. Mr. Chairman, as far as the Abigail Adams Scholarship is concerned, does this body have any, any opportunity to maybe change the qualifications on that?
No.
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 Because, I mean, the unfairness tied to the MCAS-
Yeah.
-why can't we just tie Abigail Adams to high-ranking students instead of just the MCAS?
You want to tell them?
Yeah, so when the legislation was passed, it was passed as an incentive for the MCAS. So, students score high on the MCAS, it's automatically Abigail Adams Scholarship to State College University, or State College University. So, so it would take a legislative-
Okay, second question. Given the endowment we have in some of our scholarship funds, is there anywhere that we could make up for that with our graduating students from Durfee with another scholarship?
Tommy, we don't control that. The Alumni Committee controls that money.
Well, is that, is this a question that we can raise to the alumni?
Well, you can ask them, Tom.
Maybe, yeah, maybe a draft statement by this body, you know, maybe-
You can ask them first, but I think they have restrictions on those scholarships also. Most of them are given in the name of someone for a specific purpose.
Right. And my question was to change the nature of the Abigail Adams Scholarship into maybe something more local for one of our graduating seniors. That was my question. I would, I would like to ask that organization if we could do such a thing. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Costa?
Just quickly, and I know Saleh did a fantastic job discussing her thoughts on the MCAS, but I don't want the meeting to pass without also congrat- but I don't want the meeting to um to pass without also congratulating you and all those involved in the key club, the key club, excuse me, an induction that occurred this past Sunday. Durfee now has an established key club, um inducted into the New England and Bermuda region. And um, you know, I I think you guys did a fantastic job the other night. Um congratulations for that. Um I think that's huge. For, not only for the, you know, for the high school itself, but also for the community. So congratulations on that as well. I I think sometimes we overlook the fact that there's some fantastic things going on at Durfee. And I know your your focus has been on MCAS tonight, but didn't want the opportunity to go by without congratulating you and all those involved in your process to become inducted, uh an inducted chapter of the uh the Key Club. So thank you. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh Mr. Agia.
Just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Corey was mentioning about the Abigail Adams Scholarship. I think that sometimes it looks like it's a little better than it really is in reality. So I think that when we look at the millions of dollars that are gonna be coming down in, you know, S R funds and all that, that might be something that you wanna uh advocate with the state to do to maybe pump up some of the money. So it looks like they get a free tuition to the state school and all that stuff, but when you look at it, it's really not a tremendous amount of money. So if there is a lot of millions of dollars floating around the city or state, the, when they're doing their budget, they could always do something to increase that amount of money. That would be probably more advocacy than the locals, um just a suggestion. With that, I yield.
Yep, okay. Thanks, Soleil. Next item up, number six, approval of minutes from the grievance subcommittee meeting of two twenty-four, twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Second. I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion, second. I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Deb?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Har.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Um, number seven is an approval of a travel request.
Motion to accept.
And a second, just one correction, Mr. Hart, on, it it says on the destination, it says April twenty-one, that's April of twenty-two. Uh that, this is for next year.
It was approved.
I have a motion?
It was previously approved in April of twenty-one.
Okay.
It was last year's trip.
That's last year's travel. Alright, so we're going forward. Motion and a second?
Second.
Discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Har.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. We have one other one, Office of Learning and Teaching, Cheryl Rabbit, requesting permission.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Har.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Uh, item number eight, we have an acceptance of some donations. Um, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Um, Doc, uh Dr. Malone?
We gotta vote for them first.
Oh, you vote for them first?
We gotta know we're voting them.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I know, that's what I think. You gotta read them first.
Okay, this is new, but Project Lead the Way to Talbot Middle School, seven thousand five hundred dollars. From Hilltop Gridiron Club, Durfee High School Athletics, eighty black full-face coverings and helmet liners for eight hundred and eighty dollars. From the Hilltop Gridiron Club to Durfee High School Athletics, eighty-four pairs of Russell NFHS football gloves for five hundred and forty-seven fifty-three cents. Ohio Ply Prints Incorporated, Durfee High School, a hundred and one dollars and sixty-five cents. And from Pell Industries Incorporated, Durfee High School, forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. We thank our philanthropic supporters.
There's one more right at the bottom. Um, Durfee, forty-seven, sixty-seven from Pell Industries.
Yeah, I said that.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, a motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Har.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. We have a number of contracts under number nine. Um, any questions on any of the contracts? Hearing none.
Motion to approve contracts.
I have a motion.
Second.
Oh. Motion, second, Mr. Costa.
Second, just with a question, Mr. Chairman. If I can, the webcambers for synchronized learning on the operating budget for technology, who are those cameras for? Those for staff, students?
Classes, teachers. It's there for teachers to support.
I'm sorry, I can't see through the mask. I'm, and I can't hear very well. I'm sorry.
They're to support instruction for teachers.
So it'll be teachers using the cameras in their classroom?
Yes.
Are those in addition to what the?
Yes.
Camera feature that's built into the computers already?
Yeah, so that it doesn't tether a teacher to the computer so they can move around. So we bought some roving cameras to experiment with some classrooms.
Okay. I think I had read or heard something about that. So that's what those are. Those aren't just the mounted on top of their computer. It's gonna be in their classroom and basically it follows them.
Yeah, I think that they can mount it on the computer screen or they can put it in the room. Obviously, Scott would be a better person to answer that, but it's to support teachers with synchronous instruction.
I'm not sure who it was who advised me of it, but I believe it does move with.
Follows the teacher.
It follows the voice. So the, the only question I would have for that, and unfortunately, um, Mr. Cabral's not here, but um would just be the the bandwidth necessary. I'm assuming these are wireless, so I just wanna make sure that, I know we've done some upgrades um to the bandwidth in our schools. And I'm assuming that, um, and again, unfortunately, um, I just wanna make sure that that if we make this investment, that we obviously um have the bandwidth in order to successfully roll it out.
I know that Mr. Farias and Mr. Um, Mr. Cabral both had done some research and explored um the technology needed.
Actually, it may have been Mr. Farias early on who who explained the concept behind these. So I'm glad I asked because I was just assuming it was sort of a mounted camera in addition to the ones that computers already have. The only other question I have, is that a single-source item or is that something that went out for bid? Was CDWG the lowest bidder or was it considered single-source?
I don't, I I can't. Oh. Scott.
Who is that masked man?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so the um, to answer your first question on the bandwidth, bandwidth will not be an issue. Um, the cameras that we looked at, um, Mr. Costa, the camera that you were talking about is like an eighteen-hundred-dollar camera, which would uh follow the person throughout the room. Um, so cost-wise, it wasn't effective. And also, they work on the same channels, so there would be some um interference from classroom to classroom. So we went with this um external USB camera that has a built-in um omnidirectional microphone that's gonna cover the whole classroom. And then the teacher will be able to just move that camera. It's got about an eight-foot cord on it. So our staff will go out and set them up with the teachers and show them how to use them. And it'll give the teachers a, just a better view of the room and the kids at home will be able to see the whiteboard and their friends.
And the only question I had, Mr. Cabral, and thank you for that, was, is it a single-source item? Or was this um company the lowest bidder or?
So um, we sent it out to some of our usual vendors. We got the three quotes. And CDW came in the lowest. Uh, one of our other vendors wanted to actually up-charge us on it because it was a a larger quantity. And then the other one just came in higher than CDW.
So the three bid, we got the three bids that are lowest bidder?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Agia.
Just the last, uh, special education staffing services. Do we know uh what positions that this is filling? It says we can't, are using this to staff fill critical need positions?
So we filled one sped teaching position and the others are all sped power positions that we have not been able to fill this year.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that at some point, this is gonna be transferred from one account to the other.
Uh, yes, more than likely, but um as of right now, depending on how things fall out or shake out over the course of the year, we may not have to.
Yeah, and we've made an effort to find, I'm assuming, that we made an effort to find the special education teacher for this thing and we just didn't.
Absolutely.
It's not like the first choice to go to this.
No.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? I have a motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Har.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Approval of grants. We have.
So moved.
We have a one more extended learning time. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the extended learning time grant? Deb, please call the roll.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia.
Can we just get a presentation on what exactly this is?
There you go.
Sure.
Ms. Bronx.
So as you know, uh, we had three schools that were traditional extended learning time schools. Last year during budget, we cut those three grants, those three schools, right, off the budget for, and we didn't apply. As it turned out, COVID hit, no one in the state really was able to do their extended learning time. The money was appropriated in December, I believe, and was stayed there. The state had a webinar and invited all schools that typically would be ELT schools to apply for these funds that have been there to now to use for uh learning recovery, to focus on closing achievement gaps, tutoring after school, as well as prepare a robust summer program and buy resources, materials, et cetera. The money is there. It's allocated for ELT schools, so they are making it available to all the schools that would've had ELT programs to apply for that money so that they can use as a way to close achievement gaps.
So we got awarded the one point nine?
We, we have not been awarded it yet. We, we applied for it. This is what we applied. It it goes, as you know, goes by student enrollment, so that's what our allocation would be. We put it on the um uh agenda. This is what the poten- what potentially we would get if we are, we should be hearing hopefully this week. But that we did apply for those funds that were earmarked. They encouraged all schools that would've typically been part of that to apply for the monies.
Yeah, I I just, when they said approval of grants, normally this means we have gotten it. So that was a little confusing, but my concern is just what, you know, I get the three schools. We've gone over this before about the inequity in that across the district. And I wasn't sure if this was just gonna start up what we did before. It sounds like it's gonna be something different. And uh I would assume that we'd be looking at trying to help everybody. So if the grant covered some, maybe the other schools get something similar. But I think you explained it and I'm assuming we're gonna, if we get approval on it, then we're gonna get something to come back to say how we're gonna spend it.
Right, each of the schools had to create a proposal and they had to designate what they would spend their money on. Um, the, I did ask, because Mr. Almeida, myself, Dr. Curly, the principals, we took part in that webinar. Did ask whether we could use that money for all of our schools, right? Because everybody has been, has suffered because of this. But this is money that's specifically earmarked for the ELT schools, so only those three schools uh can have access to that particular fund.
But we could def- we could then not, not fund other things and ship that, those funds.
Right, we could reallocate our own resources and use that, that money for those three schools.
Thank you for the clarification. I yield.
No problem.
The applications are in the binder.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything further? I have a motion, a second.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Har.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Committee of the Hall, eleven point one, a discussion and first read of the school year instructional calendar is presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
So we've negotiated with both our major labor unions on starting the year before Labor Day, which is what we will be doing, uh, or proposing to the committee tonight in this calendar. However, I'm giving you two copies. One includes PD, uh, early release days, and the other does not. And the reason that is, is because we have not yet negotiated whether or not we will have uh the early release days or not this coming year. It doesn't change any of the uh start or end. So this year, our school year proposal would start on Wednesday, September first. Uh, Labor Day is late, uh, is late this year. The calendar falls the normal one hundred and eighty-day school day, including all current uh vacations and concludes on Thursday, June sixteenth, with a built-in five-day inclement weather uh uh days, which would conclude on Thursday, June twenty-third, if we did have five days. Uh, so if the school committee votes to approve, you'll be voting to approve uh the traditional vacation schedule and end the year on Thursday, June sixteenth. We've included the, the vacation and 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 half-days and show when the semesters and trimesters. And then we also show you another example of what it looks like on it, on the actual uh ten-month calendar, how many days there are per month, what that looks like, and in both versions. So tonight approving sets the shell and I would inform the committee, or you would be part of, of course, at the end, what the uh negotiation is with the FREA. This is a first read, so you're, we're asking you to propose tonight the first read. So I actually accept it?
Mr. Corey.
Yeah, um, Mr. Superintendent, I just wanna reiterate, I'm, I'm glad that you negotiate with the two unions. How's the vibe with that? Everybody like, everybody on the same page as far as the calendar is concerned?
Yeah, so I mean, we, when we, they've done surveys on starting before Labor Day, that there's been nothing. They did that first two years, we, we promised we would do that. I think it's been a big um hit. This year, you don't have much of a feel though because Labor Day is so late this year. So usually the last couple of years, we started at the end of uh, you know, August twenty-seventh or so.
Yeah, so I was just checking in with you, Mr. Superintendent, to see where the level of accord was with our, with our partners. And as, as long as there's a good accord between our partners, I'm with you. I yield.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion, a second, Deb?
Just, I'm just, it's a first read, so we're just asking you to accept it.
Okay.
Motion to accept and place on file, I guess.
Second.
Okay, a roll call on that, Deb?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson, Har.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Eleven point two is a discussion of vote to approve the school committee meeting calendar for school year twenty-one, twenty-two, as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
So on the next item is the uh, the calendar. Uh, it will continue the Monday evening school committee meeting schedule. Uh, please note that the October meeting falls on the third Monday due to the holiday. Also note that the July meeting date was pushed, pushed back to mid-month uh to accommodate for our end-of-the-year financial reporting. And that will allow us to uh have more robust discussion. And I recommend that the school committee vote to approve the school committee meeting dates uh for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, just a question?
I have a motion.
Just a question. Well. Motion to a second.
I'll second it.
I got a motion, second, Mr. Costa.
Got a second.
Mr. Costa.
So that October date, you said falls the third Monday?
Yes.
Is that, okay, strike that. I was thinking it was gonna back us up with a meeting potentially by the council, but the council meets on Tuesdays. So because it's the third week, it'll be, if we had met on that same week, we would have two meetings on the same night, which the charter prohibits. But this will put us into the third week, which they don't have meetings on, so thank you. I yield.
Mr. Corey.
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Superintendent, uh, given the school committee calendar as it's presented tonight, my only question is, it's, um, we're alternating locations again. And um, for the sake of expedience and convenience, I was thinking about the tech crew and the uh, the amount of equipment that they have to handle and the wear and tear it takes uh for setup and breakdown. I was just wondering if we could maybe think about having all of our committee meetings at the same location that you, you may determine.
So, I mean, this is something that I know that the committees wrestle with before. I, I have no, um, I don't disagree with you, Mike, just big picture. The goal is at some point when we get the new um Pace Nagel Auditorium Center, is that we create a school committee room that's a permanent structure.
Yeah, no setup breakdown.
And we have the space, we could do it, and that would be great. But for this coming year, we just went with the typical rotation. I agree with you that it, it's, you know, and we still don't know what the conditions will be. So um, I don't know if, if you need to take that vote now, other than to say, let's revisit that in a couple of months.
Yeah, I don't, I don't raise the issue to take a vote, but I do raise the issue as a, as something that we should contemplate as we move forward. Because I'm thinking about their, their hard work and the efficiency and the wear and tear on. on all of the equipment. It really does take a beating when it's moved around a lot. So, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Agia?
I, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Corey that, you know, sending it around, everybody watches it on TV. It does make sense, both fiscally as well as so that they could create a system of playing the stuff in a lot more efficient of a manner. So, I think we should make a motion to have them all at one location, whatever location is best, working with the operations division as well as the Fred TV. So, I'd like to make that a form of an amendment to this motion so that we, we could always, you know, change that if need be. But I think going the opposite way of splitting them up is going to make us have to now change our pattern of being at one location.
I'll second that.
Mr. Uh, oh, go ahead. I, I was just, I was just going to say, rather than, you know, I mean, I'm in favor of it, but why don't we just mention CUS in the, in the motion that we'll have it here? That's all. Yeah, I'm sorry, I yield, yeah.
Mr. Costa?
The only, the only exception I would ask to that is obviously the June meeting. We try to coordinate that with the high school based on the evening school graduation. So, I'll support it. I mean, it makes sense. I, I think if you talk to the individuals who filmed this meeting, you know, this lugging of equipment from location to location is, you know, it is a taxing, you know, effort on their part. So, I would support it being in one location. I would just ask that that June meeting be the exception so that we can coordinate it with the evening school graduation. With that, I yield.
Anything further?
As far as what Mr. Harp mentioned, I'm not suggesting that, I'm trying to give leeway to Superintendent or Mr. Pacheco if there's a place. But if we think that, if they think that CUS is the place, I have no problem adding the location and set up, set up shop here for the next year.
That's what we should do.
And if there's no, if there is no evening school graduation, then we could stay here. If there is, then we would go accordingly. I agree with both of those sentiments, so.
My, my only comment is, they don't leave this set up. Do they, Mr. Pacheco? Do they leave this set up?
No, this is being set up now. It's set up because we're in this situation. We wouldn't be holding the meetings in here. We would be going to the auditorium.
But it's, they would keep all the equipment.
Right, so if we're going, right, if we're going to make this permanent place, we wouldn't be going to the auditorium.
But I, I do like, and I've had conversations with the superintendent before. You know, I'd love to have a permanent home for these meetings, the subcommittee meetings, where people just go in, flip a switch instead of running these wires and doing everything every week. But we're not there yet, so, go ahead, let's hold.
Subcommittee were good to go, but the, it's the, so. I would say, I, if I may.
Go ahead.
I would concur with the sentiment of the committee. It does make sense to be at one place. I've gone to the wrong places just because I'm trying to figure out where we are. So, let's get one place, and I think CUS makes sense.
Okay. Deb, you want to give it a whirl?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Mary Kugan?
Yes. 11.3 is a discussion. 1.363 million dollar appropriation for required local contribution to ESER 2 funding is presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
So, this is an agenda item for discussion tonight. I've asked the CFO of the city to, to join us tonight, and I believe she's on. And in the governor's House 1 budget, he included language that a local municipality can use with the approval of the school committee, the difference of, of the municipal increase in the Chapter 70 foundation budget from one year to the next. So, the additional monies that, that we're getting as part of the governor's House 1 equal about, what is that figure? 1.36 million. So, so this discussion is, is to talk about, well, you're getting 17 million. Of that 1.3 could be used by the city and count towards net school spending. That is what the governor's asked for in his budget proposal. Now, we're having a discussion tonight. There's, there's no vote, but at the same time, I also want you to know that the governor's budget, we won't know that, like, I don't know what the House and the Senate's going to do with this. So, so even if we agree to it, it may not become part of the final financial statement, the final connotation of, of how it can be used. So, I think that the intent of the governor was because the Student Opportunity Act increases the level of, of support both from the state and from the municipal, that these funds would help the municipal side be able to meet their Chapter 70 net school spending obligations. So, we've asked Mr. Hadi to join for conversation. We've given you a memo from the mayor and a document to back it up from the State Department. So, we're, we're, we're ready to answer any questions through this conversation as to the why and the what.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Hadi, how are you? Can you hear me okay?
I'm good. I, I can't hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us. So, I just, I mean, obviously, if I'm reading the agenda correctly, between 11-point, agenda item 11.3 and 11.4, is about a two, a little over two and a half million dollar ask of the city from the schools in one-time funding. And so, I understand that the first ask, the 1 point, the 1,363,965 dollar appropriation is obviously contingent upon legislation. And so, that's something, obviously, we want to take a look at. One of my concerns, and I know I expressed it to you previously, is, you know, the use of one-time money. I, I know the committee last year assisted with ESA funds for transportation purposes, and I think, you know, it went a long way in solving, or at least assisting in solving some of the financial strain the city had during COVID. So, I guess the, a couple of comments. One, we obviously know that our Chapter 70 allotment is much less, at least at this point, because the enrollment numbers are down. And so, we still haven't figured out how that's going to be addressed, because they're obviously using last year's enrollment numbers in projecting our Chapter 70 for next year and, and '22. Those students are coming back, or at least it looks like they're coming back based on enrollment numbers as students start to register. So, you know, that's a concern of mine, obviously. But, so, I guess the question is, how much of the city's FY '22 budget or projected budget, if you know, is one-time money?
Well, the FY '22, the FY '22 budget right now would be funded with the 2.36 million. So, we're looking to come to this committee for the 1.36 as Malone very nicely described what the 1.6 represented, the change in the foundation budget as presented in the governor's budget. At this point, we don't know what will end up when it comes out of conference, but would be my understanding that however it came out of conference, this 1.36 million would get adjusted. So, that is one-time money based on the net school spending computation in order to meet 100% of net school spending.
Well, the, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish, I'm sorry.
No worries. The million dollars for transportation, they're asking for the school department to assist in any of the additional cost for us with the million dollars. And again, that would be considered one-time money at this particular point. So, the two, the sum of the two is 2,360,000 that I spoke about.
So, and would that be all of the one-time money in the city's FY '22 proposal? Just that amount? Or is there going to be other one-time money in there?
More likely than not will be other one-time money in that. The mayor and I have not met with department heads at this point. One of my suggestions would be to use stabilization fund money for any capital needs. So, the capital would be a one-time expense, and the need for those capitals would be funded with stabilization monies in the '22 budget.
Right, and, and I understand that obviously the last fiscal year, '21, and, and obviously forecasting for '22, given COVID, is, is going to be a tight budget again for the city. My concern is that the comments that were made last year about the use of one-time funding is going to ring louder this year, I would imagine, because now it's not a million that's being requested. It's a little over two and a half million, or 2.6 million, or 2.36 million, excuse me. So, you know, I know we had this conversation, you and I. The city just certified its free cash recently. I saw the transfer on the city council's agenda. I believe it was about 1.3 or 1.4 million that was transferred from free cash into the stabilization account. And so, my question at that time to you was, if you're asking the school department to assist with one-time money, what's the difference if it comes from the school department as one-time money, or if it comes out of the city's available funding?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Costa. So, the transfer into stabilization will equal approximately what the one-time capital money that the department heads are asking for in their operating budgets this year. So, we will be transferring monies back out of stabilization to the operating budget to fund the capital needs.
So, then this 1.36 is going to replenish the stabilization account for those capital improvements for the city?
No, it's actually going to also fund the operating budget for '22.
Okay, so some of this is slated for that. I wasn't sure if you were just going to take stabilization money, fund capital improvements on the city side, and then take this 1.3 potentially and put it back into stabilization.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
But you're telling me you still have other needs in your operation, operational budget in '22 on the city side for this money?
Yes, most definitely.
Okay. And, and the city, and I know we talked about this, but obviously, for the adification, I guess, of my colleagues as well, the city has how much in its reserve of stabilization to date?
Right now, we have a balance of 9 million dollars. However, we budgeted one-time money, as I said, in the 201 budget of 2 million dollars. Now, we haven't needed that 2 million dollars as much, but we still have a number of months left prior to the end of the year.
I mean, obviously, that's, that's, the questions with respect to the 1.363 million, that's my extended, my questions. Obviously, I'm going to monitor and watch this. I mean, if the legislation ultimately allows for it to happen, then I'd like to obviously have further discussions with, not only here in, in the school, with the school committee, but also with the city with respect to how that money would be used. Again, I, I can't emphasize enough that, you know, the, the comments that were made with one-time money and structural deficits were heard loud and clear. And, and I think this year, depending if the, the city's intention is to use this in addition to one-time money for the FY '22 budget, I would imagine those cries will be even louder from members on the council. So, I've said this before. I mean, I think the, the committee showed last year our ability to want to work together as one city with funding. And I think, you know, the money was put to good use. Regardless of how you slice it, it was a million dollars that went over. But to that point, I guess, for the second request you're making this year, this fiscal year, for a million dollars, how much of last year's transportation? So, we budgeted around 11 million in FY '21 for transportation. How much of that has actually been spent, given that COVID shut our schools down? And obviously, the city made the decision to hold payments with vendors. And so, how much of that has actually been expended in '21?
That's the next item.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have it with me this evening. You are correct. Call has been closed. If Almeida is there, maybe you would be into that more specifically. If not, I would have it for you.
And I think, Mr. Agia, just, I, I'll hold off on my questions to the next one. I, I only raised it because it was part of the discussion, but.
I, I just have questions. I didn't know if I should answer, ask them all now or wait for the next one, that's all.
I can certainly.
Same theory, but.
Mr. Chairman, how about I do this? I'll yield back to you, Mr. Chairman, so that other members who may have questions on 11.3 can ask those. And then I just ask to be recognized under 11.4, so I can ask my questions with regards to transportation and that request. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia?
So, the first thing that I, I'm curious about here is, I always thought that we couldn't use grant money to count towards net school spending. That's the first thought I have when I'm looking at this. And I know that it was stated that, I think the superintendent just said it, but I'm not positive, that we can count this towards net school spending, so that's my.
If the House and the Senate approve it, then it becomes a one-year exemption.
Okay, so that is, I'm not wrong on that, that grant money typically could not be used.
Correct, no.
You know, when I see that fact, I saw comments from the city council, specifically council president, indicating that we should be picking up some debt service to try to help when we get our grant money. The answer back to that was, it's not counted towards net school spending. So, theoretically, in order to count something like that through net school spending, it's as simple as they put it in their state budget, that you can allow it for one year, and then you can, you can do it. And I think that's just a glaring piece of this to, to me. If the legislature, the governor's budget's probably dead on arrival, like usual, but if there's lobbying going on to the state reps and senators to say, we need to have flexibility to use some funds for debt service to give relief to the taxpayers, things like that, I think that should be part of this discussion. But on this 1.3, is the legislation saying that it can or may? Which is, which is the, what's in it? Is it say that the city can or may, like, or, or shall? Like, is it an option?
So, it, my understanding, and I, the governor's budget, a couple hundred pages long. My understanding is that may, meaning this, if this body approved it, the city could then use it. It's, it's the city's money. I'm sorry, it's the school department's money, because it comes to us based on our impoverished students. So, the money comes directly to us. This is something that the governor built in as a way to build collegiality between municipal government and school side governance.
Yeah, so I think we're a long ways. I know this is for discussion, but I'm not ready to support this tonight, especially knowing the fact that since we've talked about this originally, there's talk of a tremendous amount of money coming to both the schools and the city for ESER 3 funds, that would affect some of this discussion. So, I'm not in favor of this at the present time, but I do think we should explore the, the issues of debt service, things like that, where we could help some of our taxpayers going forward with it. So, with that, I yield.
Anything further? Okay, so let's go to the next one. 11.4 is the discussion of the 1 million dollar appropriation of transportation and $250,000 for the bookmobile through ESER funding.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Costa?
Thank you. And, so, Mr. Hadi, we started with the conversation regarding, and I think Mr. Almeida was going to provide information, but, so I was looking at, so the school department assisted with the 1 million from ESA 1 funds for transportation, which was eligible, sort of allowed the city to then take that million and use it for other issues. Some may have been public safety, other city needs. The question I had was, how much of fiscal '21's student transportation funding had actually been spent, and what's left?
So, so as of today, we've spent just over 3 million dollars in the transportation line item.
So, the balance is roughly 8 million?
We have, we have contracts that are encumbered, so I don't know what that's going to look like as, you know, through the end of the fiscal year.
Ball time.
I'd have to project, I'd have to project.
How much is encumbered at this point?
Well, right now, we've got, we've got about 7 and a half million encumbered. We've got the whole contract. encumbered. I just have to go with...
But it also depends on service and delivery, right?
Correct, correct.
So like it did fiscal '21.
What we're doing is paying for services, and that's all we're paying for.
I'm sorry?
All we've done to date is pay for services.
Right. So even if we were, worst-case scenario, paying the 7.5 million we had encumbered, there would still be roughly 3.5 million? Ballpark, 3 million? That's not encumbered and available for transportation? Right, the contract was 11, we have 7.5 that's encumbered, 2.5, 3?
About a million. About a million, based on those numbers.
Mr. Almeida, you've spent 3 million, correct?
Yes.
So we spent 3 million, but in total, so we have 3 million and then 7.5 that's encumbered, so it's almost 10.5 million?
Correct, so we have the total, the total contract encumbered for the year. Now, you know, we haven't, we're only paying what, you know, what we have so far, what we've had for services.
Right.
So as of this report, it's just over 3 million that we've spent.
That we've spent.
Correct.
And so we encumber contracts, particularly transportation, every year?
Yes.
Regardless, because we have to encumber it in order to spend it throughout the fiscal year. But I guess my angst, a little bit of my angst, lies in the fact that we don't know how much of that transportation is actually going to be spent. We know it's encumbered, but it gets encumbered every fiscal year, because we have contracts that we have to execute. I guess my hesitation, and, you know, obviously, more discussions probably warranted, and I'm glad it's here for us to talk about tonight, but hopefully we can continue to discuss this issue, because there is going to be a surplus on the city side, which is, it's a city expense, and so the city is paying for it. So if the city's going to end up with the potential savings in the amount of, you know, a million dollars or more, it begs the question, then why would the school department with its ESA funds, ESA2 funds, go ahead and transfer another million when there's already savings there in FYE 21, potentially? So I'd like more information as we go forward on what the anticipated spend rate's going to be on that, before I think we just sort of go on record and make an allocation for another million dollars in transportation from ESA funds, if the city's going to potentially have some funding available in FYE 21. With respect to the, I think it's 250,000, but I thought I saw a number that's slightly lower than that for, I think what the city's proposing is a bookmobile to bring books to different parts of the city in lieu of the closing of the South End Library. I mean, I remember as a kid going out and visiting the bookmobile, you know, certainly, I think if that eventually is made in a form of a motion at some point, I know today it's a discussion, I certainly would support that. I think that, you know, given that we are down a library in the South End, you know, I think, and Flint, that, you know, obviously, the ability for the bookmobile to travel to different parts of the city and provide books and other resources for children in those neighborhoods, I think is a worthwhile expenditure, and I think it fits nicely with a partnership between not only the schools, but certainly the city and the needs they have on their end. So I know it's not before us now, but I did mention in our conversation that if and when it does come before the committee, that's something I certainly would advocate the committee consider, because I think it's a valuable resource for the city. But the only other piece I had, and, correct me if I'm wrong, and if you don't have it before you, Ms. Ahadi, if you could check into it, but I thought also, at some point, and maybe it wasn't in '21, but there was also a transfer shortly after, I think the committee went on record and transferred the million dollars that ESA funded to transportation. Correct me if I'm wrong, but was there a transfer from transportation into healthcare, which eventually came back to the school department for a shortage at some point? I think it was on an agenda that was a recommendation of the mayor, but I think it was shortly after we sent a million down, because I remember scratching my head, saying to myself, well, wait a minute, if we just gave a million dollars, then why is it coming back as a transfer for healthcare back to the schools? I sort of, at that point, wasn't 100% sure why that would have happened, but if I can, if I can ask through the chairman, respectfully to Ms. Ahadi, I know that, Ms. Ahadi, you don't technically report or answer to the school department, but I would ask, as part of future discussions, that if you could check to see if that actually did happen, and what the rationale was for that. And on that note, I'll yield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mary, you got an answer, or are you going to wait till later?
No, I'll get the exact information for Mr. Costa, but there was a transfer related to healthcare. I don't believe it had anything to do with transportation, but I don't want to put that as cool. I think it was between school operations, health insurance, and the stabilization fund. But let me look into the detail.
If you don't mind, and I thank you for that, just, again, for purposes of discussion and clarification, it would be helpful to have that. And I may be in error, and if I am, then certainly I would stand corrected, and that's why I'm asking, rather than making a more definitive statement at this point. So if you could provide that, I would appreciate it. Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Aguirre?
Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Costa, I don't think you're in error, I think that happened with healthcare. The question I have is, last year, we had $3.3 million in unspent transportation funds. Where is that money in the city budget at present?
That money closed out to free cash at the end of the last fiscal year. It was netted against all of the revenue shortfall as a result of COVID. So at the end of last fiscal year, you net out all of your expenditure, turned back your revenue shortfall, determine what free cash would be.
So, the long shot of it, it's been basically buried within the city budget, it's not available currently.
That's correct. Any appropriation at the end of the fiscal year closes out and is not available as you carry forward to the next fiscal year.
Yep. So related to the $1 million request, I personally am not in favor of this at the present time, and I'm still concerned related to the issues from last year's bus vendors that were not compensated, and I know there's some discussion going on relative to a lawsuit and other people that are trying to figure out if they're still owed anything. So why I ask that question is, I personally, I'd like to get clarity on that particular issue, so that we can either close out last year officially and move into the, into the new year to figure out where we're at with the budget before just transferring another million dollars for that reason. But on the school side, the question about the encumbrances and stuff, don't we still have some issues with bills that are submitted but not paid, or whether we're going to pay them or not? Is that...
So today, we've only paid for services that have been provided. We've, in the beginning of the year, we had the nine days that we would have normally had school, that we didn't have school, and then we have the Wednesdays where we currently do not have, do not have school. So services are not, services are not being provided on those days.
Yep. May I ask Mr. Pacheco a few questions on this issue? Mr. Pacheco, my question is along the lines of, what are we looking at as far as a recommendation on what is required, or what is sort of right to do to, related to the issue of the Wednesdays and the 10 days, and, you know, sort of making our vendors either whole or close to whole? Like, where are we at with that as far as, since, because now we're already in March, this year started in September, so we're pretty far through it. So I'm assuming that they might be having some serious bills adding up, or expenses adding up?
So I don't have, a long answers, which is the only way I can get to this, I don't have any idea as to what the bus companies are doing as far as employees on Wednesdays. I don't have any idea what they're doing at the beginning of the year for those nine days, if they brought their personnel in, paid those people to be in, because that was the assumption that we were going to start school regularly, on a regular schedule. So those are the days that are out. The bus companies, obviously, are also out, snow days, or our remote days. Every time we call a remote day, that's a no-transportation day, and therefore, transportation is not being provided. That's an unexpected one. Normally, a snow day would be pushed to the end of the year, and it wouldn't be missed. So there's a lot of factors in this. I will go back to where I said last year, and I, it wasn't popular then, and it's probably not going to be popular here. I believe that we sign contracts to basically guarantee 180 days to people. Now, we also wrote a very good contract that allows us to not necessarily pay the 180, but to pay per diem, because the contract is a per diem price. But where I sit, I'm dealing with the bus companies every day, and it's difficult, obviously, for them to predict work, when they don't know when it's coming and when it's not. It's a long way around your question, but there are some days that they are literally out this year that they didn't expect. And obviously, if we go back to five days, it's going to mitigate at least 10 Wednesdays, maybe more, between now and the end of the school year, that they would be back delivering full students. The small shutdown caused a little bit of grief, not much, with the companies, because most of the buses still ran. There were very few buses that did not run, because we rolled back some of our initial four cohorts and changed things a little bit. So buses are running, we do have more students on buses, all of the bus regulations, as far as COVID have been relaxed, with the exception of masks. So therefore, the buses are filling up. We won't necessarily have additional buses running because of bringing more students back, which is a good thing on our part. And we also have some testing coming up, access testing, and possibly MCAS testing, that we're bringing Cohort B students back to school that will require busing on Wednesdays, even though we're not ready to go back necessarily on Wednesdays right now. I don't know if that does anything for...
It does, it does. It basically gives me, as one member, your opinion, as the person that's dealing with these vendors every day, that you think that we should be fair. And I think that that's something that I would rely on you to come to this committee and talk about that, rather than wait and wait and wait, you know, before the year ends. So currently, I think that there's some issues going on related to unexpected things that are going on, the cleaning, all that, there's, it's not easy to transport the students. And we have five-year contracts with people, I want to treat them as fair as we possibly can, and I think that's what you're, you know, basically, you're getting at the same thing. So whether it's popular or not, I do agree with what you're saying.
There is some things, if I could, that are outside of the contract, that we know we were never going to get as part of the contract. There's nothing in the contract that says they have to clean their buses and sanitize as many times as they do. There is nothing in the contract that is forcing them to do that, other than the fact that we need it done in order to transport those students safely. So that money has always been assumed outside of contract and would be a COVID-related expense. One of those, that's one of those items, particularly, and then there was some issues with the performance bond, with companies who, by contract, had to provide a performance bond, and by contract, paid by the city of Fall River, meaning us. So we pay the performance bond, because we're looking for the protection, not them. And those items that have not been paid, or are in the process of being paid, but those were items that were also of concern to the bus companies. I do have to say that the opportunity for some of the bus companies to grab PPP, also to grab some other stimulus, is there, and whether or not they've all accessed it, that I don't know for sure.
Right. I think that, you know, this is for discussion only, I'm definitely not in favor of it at the present time, but I would ask you to continue to keep the committee apprised of what's happening, and if we cannot lose sight of what happened last year, because I think that's still an issue that's hanging over the city, the school department. I look back at some notes and emails related to this. On April 13, 2020, superintendent sent us a note saying, including the detail of the 3.3, note, guidance we have received from DESI is to negotiate a cost for payment. At that time, we had some discussions over it, so I, when I see this come up, when this was still in the purview here with us, I still really feel like we should try to be fair and make it whole for these folks, or whatever you can do to try to facilitate that, I would appreciate it. On the bookmobile issue, the, I'm reading the memo, and it says, "In addition, the library is asking if funding could be provided to purchase a bookmobile. It was unfortunate that the South End Library branch was closed this year, and no fault to the city, and the Flint branch had been closed previously. The book would be an asset to the children of our city, the cost of the bookmobile is between 2 and 250,000." I personally wouldn't want to, the city is in charge of whether we have our libraries, whether they're open or not. The city, it sounds like is, when I read this, is saying that in replacing a South End library, we'll come up with a bookmobile. I personally would like that to be a city issue. If they want to close, if the city votes to close, or the budget says they're going to close them, make that decision separate. If the school committee or the school department thinks that a bookmobile is beneficial through the superintendent, or Mrs. Ponce, and the principals, or whatever, then I would ask you to bring that forward to us, if we're going to fund it, you bring it forward to tell us how it's a school department expense. So I'm not necessarily opposed to a bookmobile, but I think it should come from the school department, rather than the city. With that, I yield.
I will speak on, I will speak on both of those things. When we drew up our budget, as we did with the million dollars, that's just a request, the committee will make the final decision on that. I do put it down as discussion, because I think that that's important, that we work together. Flexibility in the 1.3 was given to us by the state this year. It's not final yet, it's a proposal, so we'll wait on that, just like we will on the other one, but when the time comes, we're only asking. And again, as Mr. Aguirre said, there's a substantial amount of money that's going to come shortly down to Fall River, both in the schools and in the city, so I mean, these things can all be handled. We're, we were looking to get a pattern going, going forward. It's not etched in stone. As far as the bookmobile goes, I looked at this more as an opportunity for the schools. It would be also used by the city, but I envision something where the bus, the van pulls up at Maplewood Park, drops an awning, has a story hour, where maybe one of our English teachers at Letourneau, or Green, or Viveris reads a book to kids in the park in the summer while they get their lunch, and it has a dual purpose. At night, we pull up at O'Brien Apartments, or Olivera, and we have more adult-type books in there that they can access, or maybe some CDs. I looked at it that way. Again, it was a request to the schools. I fully expect to work with the schools and the city on this, to make it something that's going to bring an asset to the entire city. And I do look at it in relation to what happened last year with the lunches in the park and the assignments. If you went to those places where you had the Fonzieka giving out assignments to kids in the summer, I'd love to see the bookmobile pull up at Columbus with a Fonzieka teacher there, saying, who needs work? Did you finish the book for Ms. Ponce or for Mr. Almeida? And use it as a dual-purpose event. Nothing is etched in stone, it's a discussion point, but I do believe it will be an asset to the city, and it'll make Fall River a better place to live. I think we can have a lot of fun next summer, I'm hoping we get some drive-ins going, some small mini-movies maybe out at the bookmobile. Those are things I look forward to doing next year, when hopefully we're past this. But it was only a proposal for discussion, and I know that the partnership between the city and the schools would be strengthened by something that has a dual purpose of taking care of some people that may not be able to get out to a library, and helping our kids get assignments, and a positive activity in the summer. And that was it. That was it. So that's where we are. It's discussion, we'll come to it when it gets to the point where we have to make a decision. But I do not look at that in any way, shape, or form as something that's not a positive for the city. And I will cease and desist from bothering you guys about that. Item 11.5 is a discussion and vote to approve the superintendent's evaluation, as presented by school committee member Mimi Larrabee.
Ms. Ahadi still there? I don't think we need her anymore.
Mary, you're all set, I think? No, she's gone, so. She's still there, but she's gone. Ms. Larrabee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, first. Okay, so tonight, I present to you Superintendent...
Okay, so tonight, I present to you Superintendent Matthew H. Malone's 2019-2020 evaluation report. First, on behalf of the Evaluation Subcommittee, which is comprised of myself, Committeeman Hart and Hetzler, I would like to thank you, thank all our colleagues for their efforts during this process. Thank you, to you as well, Deb, for all your help. The process, all school committee members were given, well, asked to complete their evaluation of Dr. Malone in two weeks. Once all seven members of the school committee completed Dr. Malone's evaluation, myself, Committeeman Hetzler and Deb Cabral met to compile all findings. Committeeman Hart wasn't able to attend due to a family commitment. We used a mathematical matrix to navigate and our findings are as follows. We will start with step one on page one. His goals, progress towards his goals, his professional practice goals, some progress, student learning goals, some progress, and district improvement goals with significant progress. I should have started, it's, did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met and exceeded. So, I repeat, professional practice with some progress, student learning goals, some progress, district improvement goals, significant progress. Step two, it says performance on standards. Standard one, instructional leadership. So, the four are unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient and exemplary. Standard one, instructional leadership, we found him to be proficient. Standard two, management and operations, we found him to need improvement. Standard three, family and community engagement, we found him to be proficient. And standard four, professional culture, needs improvement. So, his overall summative performance based on step one and step two is needs improvement. So, we then moved on to his performance goals. His student learning goal, what was comprised of achievement, student growth, high school completion, English language proficiency and additional indicators. The options were did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met and exceeded. We found him at some progress. His professional practice goal, we found him at some progress. His district improvement goal, learning and teaching, we found him some progress. His district improvement, his extended learning time, we found significant progress. His district improvement goal three, gifted and talented education, we found significant progress. District improvement four, special education, we found significant progress. District improvement goal five, early childhood education, we found some progress. District improvement six, facilities, capital improvements and transportation, we found significant progress. District improvement goal seven, student success pathways, we found significant progress. District improvement goal number eight, human capital, we found significant progress. As we moved on to the superintendent's performance rating, standard one, instructional leadership, 1A is curriculum, we found him proficient. Instruction, proficient. Assessment, proficient. Evaluation, needs improvement. Data-informed decision-making, needs improvement. Student learning, 1F. Overall rating for standard one, instructional leadership, we found proficient. Okay? School committee, colleagues, it, it did, I guess we calculated that wrong, but the final draft I did fix, you'll see that it says need improvement for instructional leadership. But if you look back and, and you calculate the proficient and the needs improvement, that instructional leadership is proficient. Superintendent's performance rating, performance rating for standard two, management and operations, again, the options are needs improve, needs improvement, or is it proficient and exemplary? Yeah. So, environment, we found proficient, proficient, sorry. Human resources, we found needs improvement. Scheduling and management information system, we found needs improvement. Law, ethics, policies, we found needs improvement. Fiscal systems, we found proficient. Overall rating for standard two, management operation, we found needs improvement. Superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and community engagement, engagement, needs improvement. Sharing responsibility, needs improvement. Communication, needs improvement. Family concern, needs improvement. Overall rating, family and community engagement, needs improvement. Performance rating number four, professional culture, commitment to high standards. Again, it's unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, exemplary. We found him needs improvement. Cultural proficiency, we found needs improvement. Continuous learning, we found proficient. Shared vision, proficient. Managing conflict, needs improvement. And overall ratings for standard four, professional culture, needs improvement. I've also combined some of the comments that my colleagues wrote, so I will continue on. In March of 2020, Dr. Malone, along with his team, led our district by executing a carefully thought-out plan to transition from traditional in-school learning to a remote learning platform. This remote learning platform was planned and was originally believed to be implemented for a two-year period, then the Fall River Public School System would pivot back to in-school learning. COVID-19 has been the worst stretch of disruption for, for public education in our lifetime. In the summer months of 2020, Dr. Malone and his team, with the assistance from DESI School Committee, local and state health officials and community stakeholders, ran operations at an all-out level in order to adapt to the immediacy of change in our service delivery to teachers and students. In September 2020, Dr. Malone and the Fall River Public School System led all urban public school districts with a progressive hybrid model. All schools were equipped with all necessary PPE, buildings were consistently sanitized, Chromebooks and hotspots were made available to all students, technology platforms were created and hundreds of thousands of grab-and-go meals were provided to our community. All memorandums of agreement were secured with all, with all collective bargaining units to safely reopen our schools. During COVID, Dr. Malone had managed operations with precision. He did his best to ensure the needs of students and faculty were met. Since September, Dr. Malone, with some of his, some members of his administration team, have been serving on, on the Supporting Remote Learning Site Task Force. This task force meets once a month with all staff representing three Fall River remote learning sites, serving close to 300 Fall River public school students. Information sharing, sorry, information sharing from these meetings have led to communication gap improvements between students and teachers, social-emotional referrals from school students in need and feedback about the remote learning platform to support all students and teachers. Over 150 desks and daily lunches have been provided to all students enrolled in remote learning sites. Dr. Malone and his team have done an excellent job supporting the community remote learning sites. School committee was made aware that there was a lapse in MIS support during the evaluation period, and this lapse slowed the ability to secure, produce valuable district data for information purposes. The superintendent should consider the diversification of the staffing in the MIS department to allow for the cross-training of additional staff. The superintendent is well-versed in policy, goals and outcomes. He is included with the language of the state legislature and the governor's office when it comes to fiscal language as it translates to net school spending and school funding. The superintendent performed exceedingly well with his fiscal management of the budget development, presentation and implementation. The superintendent advocated for sufficient educational funding from local, state and federal officials to support the diverse population of our district students, ELLs, sped, low-income. The superintendent, through our chief financial officer, provides accurate, detailed financial data to the school committee with monthly budget reports and quarterly budget transfer requests. The Fall River Public School System should be a consistent for all non-union staff, including principals. If the superintendent is allowed to use flex time, that should be a standard policy across the board. School committee feels the superintendent must do a better job with formal evaluation of staff. School committee believes it is in the best interest of the district if the superintendent serves as a South Coast Collaborative Board member. The school committee takes inappropriate staff conduct very seriously. During this evaluation period, the superintendent engaged in unprofessional conduct with staff, which was addressed immediately by the school committee with due process, as resulted in the amendment of the terms of his employment contract. Although the superintendent admitted and stated, "I broke the tenets of our core values by behaving in a manner that disrupted the teamwork of our central office and hurt the feelings of our professional community," the school committee does not condone this behavior. Moving forward, Dr. Malone must be a better leader, a better communicator and more mindful of his language, his conduct and his demeanor with the entire Fall River Public School community. Thank you.
Any comments?
Motion to approve?
Second, I'll make it. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Kevin?
So...
Mr. Aguirre, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, as I've done in the past, I would like to give this copy to Mrs. Cabral of my personal evaluation. And I want to share that with my colleagues, so being transparent, some of the things that are on here, we are supposed to give comments and analysis when we rate anybody in a certain category. So, based on the, on the document, the, the actual rubric, it states in it the comments and analysis, which is recommended for an overall rating, but required for an overall rating of exemplary needs improvement or unsatisfactory in each of the four or five sections that are in here. So, I personally filed some, wrote some things here and I, I labeled in standard four, superintendent was unsatisfactory. Dr. Malone stated in his self-reflection that, quote, "Our faculty and staff know they can say anything to me, they can tell me hard truths without any fear of repercussions. This is simply not an accurate statement based upon both overwhelming evidence in the department, community and to me personally. Dr. Malone does not accept oversight and constructive questioning in a manner that should be expected in a leader. Furthermore, Dr. Malone has created a culture in the school department where many individuals are fearful of retaliation if they raise any concerns for his behavior. Hence, my unsatisfactory in standard four." I gave him needs improvement in standard three. There have been way too many situations where Dr. Malone has demonstrated poor impulse control in responding to parents and members of the community in an angry manner. Similar behavior has been demonstrated toward school committee members as well. This type of behavior has been previously pointed out by several members of the school committee as an area of need of improvement for Dr. Malone. In standard two, my ranking was unsatisfactory. Dr. Malone demonstrated a lack of awareness of consistent non-compliance with some or all state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies or collective bargaining agreements and/or fails to adhere to ethical guidelines. This is language directly from the DESE rubric. Dr. Malone indicated in his self-reflection that he hasn't taken a sick day in the past year. There's simply conflicts with the information sent to the committee throughout the year. It's disheartening to me to see this misinformation in the self-reflection. Dr. Malone receives sick time and he does not utilize all of his days to his credit. There is really no reason not to be accurate in reporting to the committee. Moving forward, I think there should be a clear system of accountability and reporting related to work hours, sick and vacation time for all employees, including the superintendent. This system should be consistent for all non-union staff, including principals. For example, if the superintendent is allowed to utilize self-declared flex time, that should be a standard policy across the board. Dr. Malone has acknowledged that he broke the central tenets of the core values that we model for students by acting overbearing, rude and profane communications with staff. This behavior led to a rating of unsatisfactory on standard two. On standard one, my rating was needs improvement. The superintendent does not ensure that all staff are formally evaluated. I have asked on multiple occasions if all staff have been evaluated and I receive a lot of excuses, as well as a comment that Dr. Malone does not like or believe in formal evaluations. And it is becoming exceedingly difficult to maintain high expectations for our staff due to Dr. Malone's acknowledged inappropriate behavior. related to my overall rating, my overall rating was unsatisfactory. The following are a few summaries of the many, many regarding my rationale for assigning an unsatisfactory rating. Dr. Malone has acknowledged that he broke the central tenets of the core values that we model for students by acting overbearing, rude and profane in communications. This school committee member takes staff conduct and the school department policies very seriously, in particular, policies GBEB, staff conduct that reads, "The school committee expects staff to conduct themselves in a manner that not only reflects credit to the school system, but also sets forth a model worthy of emulation by students." Policy ACAC, harassment policy, reads the following, "Behaviors or actions which are unwanted, offensive or intimidating to others. Adults and students must refuse to engage in speech or other behaviors which demean others." Third, Dr. Malone single-handedly cost the school district over $200,000 in savings due to his refusal to serve on the Board of the South Coast Collaborative. Additionally, the school department is now involved in several lawsuits that will potentially cost the department a lot of money that would be better utilized on programs for our students than as the result of lawsuits. These facts, as well as the overall totality of my analysis of Dr. Malone's performance over the last year, have led me to a rating of unsatisfactory. With that, I yield.
Anything further on the evaluation? Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I too have given my evaluation to Ms. Cabral, so it's going, it's going, obviously, everybody's evaluation would be public record, but I, I... But I, I just wanted to go on record and just say as well that I did give the superintendent an unsatisfactory grade overall. But rather than get, get, you know, deep into it, people can see my evaluation, and I, I just, based on, you know, the superintendent's with his comments that he, and it's been repeated here a couple times, that he broke the tenets of our core values by behaving in a manner that disrupted the teamwork of our central office and hurt the feelings of our professional community. I just, based on those, I gave the superintendent an unsatisfactory grade for me. And also too, I think that in my comments on, one of my comments is that the superintendent needs to work at improving his ability to properly manage conflict. So just having said that, I just wanted to make it clear what my, what my evaluation report was. So, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I just want to say that on my behalf, that as I was doing the evaluation, I duly noted where I thought the superintendent may have fallen short in certain conduct issues, but also wanted to underline some of the real staunch progress that this district has faced, especially in these challenging COVID times, especially last summer, when we put together an award-winning coalition district-wide, many stakeholders at the table, working all together to develop a reopening plan unlike anything we've ever seen before. So managing operations with precision, so to speak, is also part of the equation. And as far as the conduct issues are concerned, okay, they have been addressed dutifully and responsibly by this committee. And I believe that in order to maintain a certain consistent progress in our district, it maintains what we have in place because it's working very well, and we need to make improvements, and that was duly noted in this evaluative report, that improvement is needed. But as far as systematic operations are concerned, the district is moving along very well. With that, I yield, Mr. Chair.
Anything further on evaluation? Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so all of the evaluations are individually, and I would imagine after a vote collectively in a composite documented. So certainly, my evaluation will speak for itself. I think when I looked at the entire review period, you know, in order to be fair and balanced, yeah, there were some areas that I think the superintendent did exceedingly well in, given the challenging times the district found itself in, in the midst of a pandemic, with no sort of rulebook or playbook, if you will, in terms of how to transition from all students being in school to one day all students being home and not in school. And so I think my evaluation will accentuate areas in which I think the superintendent led his team. But I also would be remiss if I didn't address the issue of, of the superintendent's conduct, and that's duly noted in my comments, both as part of the composite and certainly as a part of my individual evaluation. So people certainly feel, can feel free to read those comments. But I think in the interest of being fair and balanced, I don't think that the issue that was before us in terms of the superintendent's conduct should necessarily cast such a dark shadow that it overstates the fact that this district did open its schools during a pandemic in one of the most progressive hybrid models in urban districts, and that's reality. There's school districts that is date who have not returned, and I think to the credit of the superintendent and his team, with the assistance of this committee, has allowed that to happen. But, you know, I'll, I'll speak, and I won't read my entire comments, but I'll just go to my comments with respect to the standards regarding professional culture. And I also indicated that there was needs improvement. I said, "The evaluator's overall rating for standard number four, professional culture is needs improvement." This evaluator acknowledges the superintendent's commitment to high standards for teaching and learning, focused on student data to guide best practices and improve results, and a shared vision that every student can be successful. However, as the educational leader of this district, his admitted lapse in professional judgment causes strain on the professional culture. The superintendent allowed his professional and personal boundaries with his staff to become clouded. This evaluator and the entire school committee are committed to ensuring the professional culture improves and that the superintendent regains the trust of district staff, parents, and stakeholders throughout. Honest reflection in tangible actions. You know, I'm not going to go into reading all my comments, but I think in the interest of being balanced, yes, I think plenty has been said tonight with respect to the superintendent and his performance. However, again, I don't know that the other parts of this evaluation should necessarily be discredited or thrown out because of the amount of time, effort, and work that went into, in a very stressful time, opening up or planning to open up our district for its 10,000 students and staff in a safe manner. And so, again, my evaluation's available for my colleagues if they'd like to see it individually. And my comments, Mr. Superintendent, I know that you'll see the composite, but I encourage you to look at mine, and hopefully that when you're done reviewing it, you will see that I think you were given credit in areas where I think credit was due. However, I think there's some areas in my evaluation that hopefully will provide you some professional guidance going forward, and I look forward to seeing some tangible actions with respect to those areas that I made comment on. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
I really didn't want to talk on this issue, but I will. I only describe this as a heartbreaking time for this school committee. All of us together, although I was excluded from much of it, I definitely felt what all the other guys on this committee were going through, and a bunch of.
Guys.
Not all guys.
I think the reference was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I call everybody that. Mimi, sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Larrabee. I speak from the heart on this because I really believe that this was a situation that got out of control extremely rapidly, and it led to a lot of poor feelings across the district, not just on this school committee, but for our staff and our administrators and even our families. We hopefully can move on from this, but I can only express my disappointment in the behavior of the superintendent as strongly as possible. I do wish I had been allowed to participate, but I don't know if it would have changed the outcome because everybody in this room can count votes. I do want to thank Ms. Larrabee for going through this. It must have been tedious work to have to plow through both positive and negative comments over and over again. I don't ever want to hear about this situation again, but I can't believe that's going to happen. I think we do have some things out there in the wind that are going to go through the legal route. And again, I'm extremely disappointed that professional boundaries were blown to bits, and I hope going forward that something good will come out of this, hopefully. Thank you again, Ms. Larrabee.
I'm not done with my part.
I'm sorry?
I'm not done with my part.
Are you going to talk?
I get to speak at the end of my evaluation every year.
Go right in.
So first and foremost, appreciate the feedback of the committee. We'll be talking with the attorney about the agreement we had around double jeopardy, some of those items that Mr. Agia raised is definitely concerning to me. Some of the other insinuations that have been said in this public forum that weren't proven true are also concerning to me around boundaries and harassment. No finding means no finding on those two issues. But we'll address that to the attorneys, and Bruce will definitely earn his pay on that issue. Also, issues, of course, around, you know, the committee having more leaks in the Titanic with the executive session. Those items will definitely be addressed as we go forward. But in terms of the feedback that I have here from the committee, my feedback to the committee is Kevin Agia is not the committee. He's one member of the committee. Thank you for reading your evaluation, but you are one member. And why didn't everyone else get to report? You asked for it, but you're one member. If the whole committee said, "Matt, please give that to report here," one, it would have gotten done. That's how school committees work, governance 101. I know you work as a vice principal somewhere, but maybe talk to your superintendent about how he does that with his committee, or the other superintendents that you've worked for for short periods of time every few years. But I think that the, when you think about feedback communication is one that I've really focused on. So to hear the feedback on communication, I don't, you know, that's an area. I guess if it's communication to the committee, which I always think it is, I don't think I could do a better job. But if it's communication to other people, that's, that's hearsay, or that's, you know, based on someone's opinion. So I think that there's definitely some subjective pieces that went into, particularly, as Mr. Hart said, as Mr. Agia said, but at the same time, I can only do what I can do. I think, you know, I led this committee through the toughest times it's ever had, did so successfully. And I don't know if you could have found a superintendent that couldn't have done it any better. So I'm going to continue to do the work that needs to be done with your blessing and your guidance and governance, which we do. And I feel strongly that, you know, the feedback, I think I've definitely taken consideration in terms of my role, my ownership of what I've done in terms of disrupting the good order of the district. And I've made improvements in those areas, and will continue to do so. So as far as I'm concerned, we got a lot of work to do. We got to get into doing it. And I think the committee's got to keep working like a committee. And hopefully, that happens over the next few months, and that we have a solid seven really making decisions that drive the best interest for kids.
That's it. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did forget, just being on the subcommittee for the evaluation here. I did, I neglected to thank school committee woman and chairwoman, Mimi Larrabee, and also my colleague, Josh Hudson. It was a good evaluation subcommittee, and I thought we, we overall did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Agia?
So basically, the, what I wrote was what is supposed to be done. So we do an evaluation that says you need to make a comment. That's what I read. What I did talk about was public comments. Absolutely, stuff that's out there in the public, we can't shy away from that. At the end of the day, I am one member of this committee, and that's why I stated what I said. When I suggested to the committee, or to the principals, that they should get a document that's a public document that makes sense with full transparency, they should get that. But what we have is a superintendent who only wants to do certain things, and he wants to treat certain members differently than each other. When I look at the way that I get treated personally by this superintendent, I can only imagine how he treats the people that work for him. And this includes almost on a, anything I ask. So I've tried to be respectful. I've tried to ask some questions on behalf of the constituents, on behalf of the workers in the district, and I get resistance from this superintendent on a regular basis. So to try to suggest that I'm doing anything outside of the ordinary, I'm one elected member of the school committee that's doing a job and putting hours upon hours into studying and researching to try to make this district a better place for our students, teachers, and families. That's it. So I don't really want to get back and forth about how I get treated, but if the superintendent wants to keep coming back at me, that's some of the problem here. So some of the problem is, is the way that you just, you can't take, what I said was, you can't take constructive criticism. That's what happens. You come back, and you want to just keep on threatening. You want to keep on, you know, being aggressive with people. That is what needs to change. That type of behavior needs to change, not only for how you deal with the school committee, but how you deal with people that work for you across the entire district. And I yield.
Anything further on the superintendent's evaluation? Hearing none, we have to vote to accept it.
You have a motion in a second? Yeah?
Yes, we have a motion in a second.
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.6 is a second read and vote to approve the SRO memorandum of understanding.
Motion to approve through second reading?
Second.
Any further discussion on the SRO amendment? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the sergeant is here or not, but the issue of, when I, is he a yes or no?
Yes.
It's coming over right now.
Okay, thank you.
He's been sitting here the whole night.
What?
He's been sitting here the whole night? Why don't we bring it forward?
I didn't even know there was anybody here. I looked around, he was there. I didn't know he was here. Never said anything to me.
Thank you, sergeant. I just, I want to be brief, but I know last time when you were on the Zoom, I asked about the standard operating procedure, and I know that I shared with you some of my concerns of things that maybe were in there that didn't match with the MOU. And my only question was if those things have been, I think the SOP was not a new one. I think that was done a few years ago. Is there anything that still conflicts, or are they, is that going to be a work in progress for you guys as you proceed?
It's a work in progress right now. We're in the process of updating our SOP to meet the requirements of the police reform bill. So I just actually completed the first draft two days ago, and we're, I've sent it up the chain. It needs to be reviewed by the chief, the union, and then it goes through the accreditation process, and then we should get it implemented, hopefully, within the next few weeks.
Yeah, I want to thank you for your work on it. I suggested some things. You guys listened to them. I know I'm only one member of the committee, but I do appreciate you at least looking at some of those inconsistencies. And as you go forward, you know, the SOP should match, and I think you and the chief both agree that that, they shouldn't be conflicting. So if it says one thing and one, it should say something similar in the other. So I want to thank you for your work on this, and I appreciate it. I yield.
Anything further on, Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sergeant Galvale, thank you for being here. Let me just extend my apologies personally for having to wait two and a half hours before we get to a second read on an agenda item. I apologize. I would have certainly made that request to bring it forward sooner. But I want to thank you for the work you put into this. I know that, obviously, with the changes in the law, obviously, that the memorandum of agreement needed some significant changes, and will continue to need that as well. And so to Mr. Agia's point, thank you for doing that. Thank you for the partnership that I know that the school department has had with the police department and the services that have been provided, not just by you and your offices, but sergeants prior to you who've worked very hard to make sure that the offices are present, are visible in our schools, and that are working collaboratively and collectively with our building principals to maintain a safe environment. And I know that there's a lot of work that your offices do that doesn't go, doesn't go unnoticed by us, but certainly probably to most, it is unnoticed because a lot of that time includes investigations that are occurring on alleged criminal activity that needs to be investigated. And I know your offices spend numerous hours doing that for each of the schools and collectively as a district. So thank you, sergeant. I appreciate it, and I appreciate your time here tonight. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Corey?
Sergeant Galvale, thank you so much. Again, let me, sorry you had to wait so long, but as one, as a retired educator and one who worked with the SROs so closely, I truly respect your position, sir, and I want to thank you for assuming this position. To be an SRO is almost like being an educator. You're working with kids every day, and so you're in a different world. There's a different psychology in that world than there is in the adult world. We have an opportunity to shape minds and to influence young people in positive ways. So for just that, Sergeant Galvale, I want to thank you so much for assuming this position this year, working with us as partners, and please, let's keep our partnership alive. Anything you need, please communicate to us directly. We're in a position to support you straight up. And I just want to say one more time, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I yield.
Anything further? Ms. Larrabee? I'm sorry. Anybody have anything further? Okay, roll call that, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
We're also sorry. I didn't know you were over there. We would have grabbed you earlier and jumped the agenda. Sorry.
Sure.
Thanks, sergeant.
You're welcome.
Okay. 11.7 is discussion and a vote to approve the draft MCAS statement as presented by school committee man Tom Corey.
Okay, as it said in the proposal. Okay, as it said in the proposal, this is a draft. It's for us to think about and take a vote on. So on behalf of the teachers and the students in the fall of the public schools, I'm really proud of our collaborative relationship with the FREA and the FRAA. We have kept our staff whole throughout the pandemic. No pink slips, no grievances. We are listening as a school committee and a body, and we are watching. And we're reacting by adding more social, emotional learning supports and more nursing supports and more family outreach in the middle of this pandemic. We've had more of this type of staff than ever before. Giving the MCAS this school year would do nothing but create more teacher stress and more student stress and trauma. Therefore, I am going to read a brief statement and ask my colleagues to support it. "We, the elected members of the school committee for the fall of the public schools, are adamantly against the administration of the MCAS during the 2020-2021 school year. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the massive disruption of our school year, we believe that the administration of the MCAS in any form, either for accountability purposes or as a diagnostic instrument, is unethical, immoral, and will only add further disruption and stress to an already stressful year. The pandemic has highlighted the massive inequities of our society as well as issues of access and justice that have resulted from virtual and hybrid remote instruction. These issues have played out most nefariously in our gateway cities and rural communities in Massachusetts. As such, any sort of standardized testing system such as the MCAS would be glaringly tone deaf if mandated by policymakers and regulatory authorities. Instead, help supporting local districts with the technical assistance and resources to reopen schools more fully, extend learning opportunities for the summer, and provide communities with the support to close achievement gaps and combat the learning loss and trauma that our students and our faculty have greatly endured."
That's the end of the statement, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further on the statement, Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Corey, for putting together a draft. I certainly can support sending a statement for whatever purpose that'll serve, but I think it speaks to, I think, the unfairness in an MCAS assessment, given the times that we're not only in, but on the verge of coming out of. And I think it's unfair for a number of different reasons. But I do have some issue with some of the wording. And certainly, whether this is a first read or a draft or it can be amended, you know, particularly with the comments of it being unethical or immoral. You know, I applaud the passion. I love the intent of it, which I think speaks to, I think, what we all heard here tonight regarding the stress that the district's under in terms of just getting students back in their seats and teaching them, let alone the stress of having to prepare them for a standardized test. And so I certainly support the premise of asking or going on record that MCAS testing should not occur this year. But I would just ask the maker of the motion or Mr. Corey, you know, if we can maybe wordsmith this a little bit. I think it strikes to the heart of, I think, what I know you're very passionate about. And I will just say this, that I think, you know, for the record, standardized testing to some level is okay. Particularly with MCAS, though, I know it to be one measure, and I certainly think it's sometimes an unfair measure of the actual work in teaching and learning that's going on in our schools. And so I know we do ANET testing. We do other forms of benchmark testing in a district. And I think we have, we sort of beat the whole concept of data-driven into not only our teachers, but also to our principals. So as much as I'm in favor of accountability, I just think now's not the time to sort of go down in this path where MCAS is going to be rolled out in districts that, quite frankly, are not prepared right now, nor are their students. And with respect to whether or not it'll be used as a tool, a diagnostic tool, or if it'll just get reported out, the reality is the same stigma is going to get attached to this type of testing to cities and towns like Fall River. Undoubtedly, there will be cities and towns that scores may not be as affected as gateway cities or urban districts like Fall River. And for those reasons, I will support the memorandum. But I would just ask that some of the language be wordsmithed or changed entirely, but to keep the premise that's before us now. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Costa's sentiment. I would like to, to the chair, ask Mrs. Ponce to come up to, so I could ask her a question on what's going on in our district. So the, it's a balancing act between standardized tests, you know, diagnostic tests to try to find out where our students are at. I know learning loss is a big topic right now, and I'm just trying to get, to pick your brain a little bit to see where, if we don't do this, and they might end it anyway, you know, they extended it out. But what is our system doing with measuring learning loss? And how would this be a tool that is valuable, in your opinion, as this academic assistance superintendent?
Well, I think that this will be, would be a tool, but we have been benchmarking our kids. We're using ANET and using that to adjust our teaching and learning and to gauge their loss. So everybody's in the same boat. Everybody's, learning loss is the buzzword right now. Everybody's lost. We've lost a year of instruction. So our teachers are working hard. We're using ANET. We're looking at that data, and we're making our adjustments accordingly. Certainly, I would think that maybe the MCAS data will validate the work that we've been doing all year. We're going to test, and we wouldn't get that data until, to use for the following year.
Yeah, I appreciate that, those comments. It just, you know, I get torn sometimes between, you know, the MCAS being one measure. But I think sometimes we, we as a society can take it a little bit too far to get kids to be more worked up. I understand the pandemic piece currently. But as a general tool, we are teaching to standards that that's what the test is for. So when I hear a lot of times that we're preparing for the test for weeks, academically, I don't necessarily think that's accurate. We're teaching the standards that are on the exam, and I sometimes don't like when I, when I hear that, it's like, let's just throw it out. I think there's a value to testing. And the federal government is saying that we have to test in order to give us some of the resources. So, you know, I think it's a balancing act, but I'm going to rely on what you suggested, that maybe right now is, you know, not the time, but as long as we're still doing, in your words, ANET testing, benchmarking to drive our instruction. I would agree with Mr. Costa. Maybe we can just change some of the wording to tone it down a little bit, and I will support it. Thank you, Mrs. Ponce. Appreciate it. I yield.
You're welcome.
Ms. Larrabee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with all of this. For 10 years, I've hated the test, everything it represents. My whole belief is this standardized test should never figure out, you know, how a child is progressing. Not all children learn the same, and nor do they test the same way. So with that being said, I would just maybe recommend that we do visit the Durfee students because of the scholarship and let them make a decision. And I know the whole district is at a choice right now, and the parents have a choice. But maybe we can visit the Durfee students and move forward with that. That's all. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to my colleagues for the discussion. Purposely wrote it with a high degree of passion to reflect the high degree of anger that I have inside of me in regard to the MCAS. For many, many years, our Chapter 70 appropriation has been low, one of the lowest among school districts in the state. And because of that, and because of the demographics of this area, I should say, the ever-evolving, changing demographics of this area. The MCAS has been caused for lack of teacher retention, poor Chapter 70 appropriations, injustice, inequity, and a lot of pressure for our teachers and students in the classroom. I think high-stakes testing in its concept is an idea that we need to use as a metric to gauge student advancement, and I'm partially in agreement with that. But maybe in the 21st century, we could refashion a test that would be more equitable across school districts in the Commonwealth to reflect proper student learning rather than forced student learning. And my anger has arisen because I've been speaking to so many different teachers in our district that were really fearful of the pressure to come back into a hybrid state and then immediately be faced with MCAS requirements to prepare their students who have been, you know, marginalized to a great extent this year. So, Mr. Vice Chair, I thoroughly respect your comments, and I will take note. This is certainly just a draft and can be, you know, up for us for ratification in the future. But I'm glad that you agree in spirit with the intent of the letter, and we'll certainly tone it down. But I'm also glad that I got my passion out because it's been, it's been really inside for quite a while. And I just think that the commissioner of education and the governor of our state should be all ears in this day and age, at this moment, in this period, in education, where we just heard that education has been so compromised by this pandemic that right now is a time that we can put our collective forces together statewide and maybe potentially refashion, you know, what standardized testing may look like as we move forward. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I want to thank school committeeman Corey for sending this to us here today. I am definitely in favor of it. I do believe in, or agree with Vice Chairman Costa and Mr. Agia that it probably needs some tweaking. But as he said, the intent, I think, is a good one. And it'll send a good message to DESE and whoever else wants to hear us that there are issues with the MCAS, and I'm glad he brought it up tonight. I do approve it. But obviously, it's right now a draft, and it'll be worked on again. So thank you, Mr. Corey, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Are we voting on the draft?
No.
Okay, so we're not going to hold on this? It's a discussion and vote?
What would the process look like then, Mr. Chair? Would we just redraft it and bring it?
Yeah, you'd say, yeah, you'd redraft it, bring it to the next meeting. So.
If I may, advise the board that you would vote to approve a statement and then?
Refine it?
And then refine it, and then?
Give it to us before he sends it?
Yes.
That's fine. Well, that's the motion we got. We have a motion in a second. Deb, please call.
Second.
I don't have a motion.
No, you don't have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, and I got a second from Ms. Larrabee. Go ahead, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up is 11.8, a discussion and vote to approve the Verizon Innovative Learning School Agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion as a second. Any discussion on the innovative grant for hotspots? Do you want to talk on this, Ken, or is this something we've already done?
It's up to you. Or you don't have to jump in?
It's a little different. Obviously, it's a little different than the current program we have at the middle schools. This is basically providing connectivity, about 800 students, to be sure that they continue the work that they've been doing in the middle school and make sure that they have that connectivity at home to ensure their success.
Okay.
Hotspots, that's what it is with 30 gigs of data.
But we've already got hotspots all over the city, so this is just going to help us pay for it in the next batch?
Right. It's a two-year grant that Verizon has made available to our secondary schools. So RPA, Stone, and Durfee High School, any student that's in need is going to be able to get a hotspot and get connectivity.
Great. Any discussion on hotspots? Kevin?
Yeah, just, I know we mentioned this when we were in the remote learning that we kept on spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I think it begs the question of, is there a way to just get the whole city to have free Wi-Fi, you know? Because we keep on spending, 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 and you wonder at some point what is it, you know? I think we're still far away from that financially, but I don't know if there's ways to do things differently than each individual hotspot. You know, is there ways to put things with technology in a certain area of the city? Or, you know, it's probably a technical question, but it's something to think about. If we're spending a million dollars a year on technology hotspots and all this, is there a better use of that money for the whole city, adults, kids, everybody? But that's just a thought that I have, and with that, I'll yield, and they can answer if they want or not.
Anything further on the hotspots? Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.9 is an update and discussion on the FY '22 budget as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
Just, we have this as an agenda item if there's any other questions regarding the hearings that we've been having. We'll have one on the next agenda item as well. It's just an open spot. But ideal, I will say that based on the conversations that I've heard so far, two items, two, I sent you guys information on Friday's email. There is a definite consideration for two additional sacks to get at the numbers. And I shared those numbers with you in Friday's email. So I have that written down. I just want the committee to know that I take notes during this process as well. So when I come back to the committee at the end of the process, I'll be able to say, here's really what I'm thinking based on what we got.
Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just, I think that was the email that we talked, we didn't get one about a whole laundry list. It was that those targeted pieces, if I recall. So I do agree with that. Just asking about moving forward on the agenda for next week. I think the meeting's at four, and then we have a couple of schools left. Are we voting on, is the intention to formalize a vote at that meeting? Or is it going to be at a subsequent? And then my second question would be, is that when we would get the recommendation on the ESAR, you know, the one that was on the side that we want to revisit, if that's at that meeting or is it additional?
So at that meeting, that meeting will be done to release the budget to the public. So shortly after that meeting, I'm going to, I will advertise the budget so that it's available for public comment. And then in April, we'll have the meeting. As far as the ESAR, that's kind of, it's kind of like a running tally kind of thing. So that budget will not be submitted to the state until July. So up until that point, we can make, you know, whatever recommendations, you know, up until that point and put it forward in the grant application when we do it in July.
So the intention on next Monday is only to hear from the two or three schools that we haven't heard from?
Five.
Any, five?
Yep.
But then not have further discussions? But then not have further discussions. The reason why I ask is I have a two-hour window. I have an event that I have to be at.
Okay.
So, I didn't know if I had to change it, but if we're doing the schools, we should be done by the time I...
Okay.
And I didn't want to miss the other pieces if that was the case. Thank you, I yield.
So, is it... May I?
Go ahead.
Are we asking the committee to vote on a number to release a document for discussion?
We are.
At that point, it's only discussion. You're still not voting on the final budget yet.
No. Point of information.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's not a point of information. We're going to have to. By law, we have to release at least the draft for public review and then have a public hearing on that draft budget prior to final adoption by this committee to send it down to the mayor. So, my understanding in conversations were that we'll finalize the schools at the next meeting. There'll be a vote by this committee to adopt the draft FY22 budget for release for public. You'll do the advertisement on it. Members of the public will be able to review it. We'll have a public hearing where comment can be solicited on the draft, and then, once it's deliberated, the committee wants to tweak the draft. It can, based on those comments or recommendations by either committee members or the administration, and then we'll adopt a final FY22 budget for the district that will later be sent down to the mayor as part of his overall city budget. That's my understanding. If I'm wrong, I apologize to members, but that's the way I understand it. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything further? Is that a vote, or is that informational? I think that was just...
Information.
Update discussion now, 11:10. Discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report is presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
So, you have the monthly budget report in front of you. The one thing that I did want to note that I don't have included here is that we've worked with the city, with Mary Sahadi, and with the mayor, and tomorrow night, the city will be, is putting forward to the City Council an approval of the $1.7 million to make us whole on the net school spending letter that we received from the state two weeks ago. So, I just wanted to provide that update to you tonight.
Mr. Agia? Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just clarification, that's FY '20.
That's for FY '21.
'21?
Yes.
So, oh, that's right, they were short coming in from '20.
Correct.
Okay. I just want that clarified in my head as well. Thank you, I yield.
Even now, Mr. Agia.
So, I had one question on the, at the bottom, where it says Circuit Breaker Revolving Fund.
Yep.
And those, I know we had had these discussions about creating a... The terminology might not be right, but the special ed fund. Have we gotten anywhere with that, and are we maxed out on the amounts in those accounts that we can carry forward?
Yes, we are maxed out.
So, one suggestion that I had mentioned this before at one of the special meetings, that if we can create that other account, we could potentially theoretically take the $1.7 million, if the city gives it to us now because it's already March, and put that money into that account if such an account existed, which we could carry forward and not have the pressure to try to spend right away. I would still suggest some kind of mechanism like that because we're getting the 1.7, and then, you know, where are we going to spend it in a few months, rather than wait till June to do that and then figure out where we're at? So, if we're maxed out, I would personally suggest that we look into that as an option. And I know I don't see it here, but the other accounts are good, like the revolving accounts and all that are still...
I'll bring that forward next month.
But there's no issues there, right?
No, none whatsoever.
Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of items.
Motion to accept and place on file, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Discussion.
Which one are we on?
12. Just the information, Mr. Agia.
I have a question on 12.3.
12.3, hold on.
I don't know if you're doing all 12s, or you're doing by one...
Well, we're doing them all at once, so you might as well bring it up now. We have a motion, a second. Mr. Agia?
So, I had a question on the first item. It talks about a person being appointed at step two, and I had a question on that because I've asked this question in the past, having dealt with some of these issues in the past. So, I'm curious to see if there's any kind of description of what happened here.
So, the position you're discussing is an administrator that was hired from a teaching position with us and moved into an administrative position. The article in the bargaining unit agreement states that, you know, that we put it on an appropriate step. When we hire people from the outside, we give them credit for time they've served in a similar position. This particular individual did two years as a regional manager slash administrator for TFA, who's been a longtime partner in the district Teach for America. They came on board with us as a teacher. They've been teaching with us for six years now, and now they've applied for an administrative position. They went through the entire panel interview, the process at Henry Lord, and they were strongly recommended by the principal. They came to us with a request that they be credited for that time outside, previous to coming into the teaching position, as well as the time served as the teacher leader and a support person for the TFA cohort that's within the district right now. There's eight or nine members in the district. In considering all of that, we gave them credit for one year of experience, the two full-time years before they came to the district and the additional time since then, because it was all an administrative role. And in addition to that, we received a job description and a strong recommendation from TFA that we consider those years of experience. One of the things that TFA does is they try to grow talent, and each spring, they come to us, and they ask us to consider other people that have been working in TFA roles in other districts. So, when there's a strong candidate out there, the likelihood of them receiving some consideration for their experience and their background is pretty strong. So, one of the things that we've tried to do is work on retention and give people fair credit for work and experience, and that's the reason that decision was made. Again, it was two years plus a number of years of part-time experience, and we gave them credit for one year, and that's why we placed them on step two.
So, I think you said that this person was a teacher?
Yes.
Currently. So, the language from the contract, was that followed for the administrator's contract?
For the administrator's contract, I have the...
I can read it for you if you want.
Yeah, you can read it.
So, it says, "Administrators who are promoted into their positions directly from a position held as a teacher in the Fall River School System shall be placed at the salary level and step that is closest to, but not less than, the last salary level and step received by them in their teaching position before the promotion." That's from the Fall River Administrators Association contract.
I understand.
So, the reason why I raise this is because this has happened in the past, as you know, in other situations. So, that language in the contract, I believe, isn't being followed in this particular case. So, that's why I raise it. I think it's something that you should look at, maybe, I don't... To me, it's very clear. It's not very... I just read to you what's there.
So, I believe the language is clear, if I might respond.
Sure.
But I also think that if we were to hire a teacher or another person from another district with experience, we do try to give him a fair shake in what that experience looks like. If a person has been in an administrative role, I think you credit that experience. I don't think we were overly generous in the amount of credit we gave that person considering they had close to three years between the couple of years of part-time experience and the two years of full-time experience in a similar administrative role. So, I don't think that was exorbitant, although I do understand your point about promoting from a teacher to an administrator within the district. I just think it is also fair, from the standpoint of retention, incredible service, that we do try to be flexible about how we apply that.
Yeah, and I'm not passing judgment. I don't even know this person, so I'm not passing judgment on their qualifications, their experience, or anything. All I'm looking at it as we negotiate collective bargaining agreements with our unions, and if there's language in the collective bargaining agreement that is very clear about where people need to be placed, then we just need to follow that consistently across the board so that everybody's dealing with the same issue in the contract. When you mentioned about the teachers, if somebody had a lot of experience and we credit their time, the teacher's contract doesn't have this particular language. So, that would be the reason why I would suggest that we follow the contract language so that we're consistent with it. If it's something that we should change in the contract language, we can propose that to the union and go along with it. But to me, that language is real clear, and this is not following that language. So, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? All right, so we have a motion and a second to take, bundle up all the information. Go ahead, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. New business. Do we have any new business to come before the committee tonight? Hearing, none. We have requests for executive session. Can I get a motion?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, just point of order. Can we have a reading of the intent and why we're going?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I always mess that up. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. Assad, please.
National Law Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the February 22, 2021, special meeting of the Fall River School Committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the February 24, 2021, grievance subcommittee meeting. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve the executive session committee minutes for the March 1, 2021, special meeting of the Fall River School Committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated February 24, 2021, filed by Colin Dias, began in the February 22, 2021, special meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Mr. Dias alleges a violation of the open meeting law by not allowing him into the meeting room until after citizens input and not allowing others into the meeting room. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair is determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair is determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair is determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety and security employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair is determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, including grievances relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Fall River Administrators Association, as the chair is determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including without limitations, Tianna Weems, junior computer technician supporting, Sharice Taylor, Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services and Strategic Integration. But we will reconvene. There may or may not be statements at that time.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larve?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the executive session committee minutes for February 22, 2021, special meeting of the Fall River School Committee.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion, none. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the executive session committee minutes for February 24, 2021, of the grievance subcommittee.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the executive session committee minutes for March 1, 2021, special meeting of the Fall River School Committee.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the contract as negotiated between the Fall River School Committee and Tiara Weems, junior computer technician support.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.